It is hot in here.
It's warm.
Do you want me to turn it down?
Are we good?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to call the village council. I'd like to call the village council meeting to order, October 8th, 2019, 6:30 PM. So we have a forum with the only one missing councilman at this time. So first off, we have the agenda. We have any changes, additions.
I do. Can I go first?
Yeah.
Under consent, because we do consent now, right?
Yes, yes.
Can we pull the August 29th, 2019 minutes and for those under unfinished business, there's two things that didn't get changed.
Sorry.
That's okay. And then we can approve them.
I have one thing in there too, so.
Okay. And then can we pull the statement of economic interest out of consent and put it under unfinished business?
I think it already is.
Oh, is it?
Oh, okay. It's already there.
Did we get a new agenda?
I know.
Sorry.
It was gonna be.
Is it number two? Is it two now?
Unfinished two, one or two.
It's two.
It's two, okay. I didn't see that, sorry.
It's number two.
All right, so then we'll make those.
Because we originally had it.
Yeah, originally. All right, sorry about that.
Am I correct?
No, I don't have it. I don't have it under there either.
I changed it last minute and I.
It's fine. No, no, it's fine.
So we're moving into what?
Unfinished business two would be the statement of economic interest.
What was one?
Y'all have a different one than I do? Because mine's.
They might. They must have printed theirs on Thursday.
She was the statement of economic interest.
Or Friday.
This one.
Is that the new one?
Yeah.
Perfect.
And then three, sorry. And then three would be the minutes from August 29th, 29th and 3rd. Unfinished business.
I don't.
Yeah.
Okay, so you had August 29th minutes and you're pulling what? Is that the thing you're pulling?
It's already done. I didn't know. I have the whole one.
So you're finished.
I'm done. Uh, I'm done.
You looked at the ledger online.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I didn't have that one.
So I would actually like to pull December 5th minutes. Because there's a couple of little minor things in there.
Okay. So should we just leave that three minutes, just leave that as open minutes?
Yeah. And what else is on here? Okay, a couple of things. The closed session, that's referenced on the agenda. The parcel number does not compute in GIS or on the tax search, which means that we either.
Oh, it's 06. It should say zero.
What is it?
06, instead of 16.
So I'll just say for the record though, because per public meeting, right? That's a transparency thing.
Yeah.
If anyone was trying to look it up, they wouldn't have gotten to the right spot. I certainly don't have it included, even what parcel that is. I don't know what to say there, but.
Is it something that we need an answer on?
Rohit, we can push that to the work session, can't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
I think it might be best.
Chaplin, do you need to be here for that?
No, I can relay it.
Okay. Well, it depends on how you go into. I'll just have to work with you how you go into closed session.
I mean, why don't we do, I mean, if it's work session, which is literally like a week before the November meeting, which Chaplin will be at, why don't we just move it to the November meeting?
That's fine. There's not a big push.
We should do it in the November meeting. That way Chaplin will be here.
So we're removing the closed session?
Yeah.
So is someone going to make a motion to?
They can do that quick.
I can ask that.
They'll do that again without.
So you're going to remove that?
I think we should.
I agree.
Yeah, I think we should only because it's not the right parcel number.
No, I just, I wanted to know who was going to make a motion for that.
Well, I mean, it's in the, do we make a motion since it's in the.
Did we? Chaplin should be here?
I understand that. I was just wanting to know which council member requested to remove that particular item. So that's just for the record, okay.
My list, yeah.
And we're just going to put it to the November meeting where Chaplin will be?
If you need Chaplin, do you need him for this? I wasn't sure if you guys did.
There might be some questions that y'all have that are legal. I mean, I don't think it's imperative that he's here, but I mean, if it's only a week away.
You guys don't need it? Oh, yeah, that's right. It's a week later. We moved it. Yeah, you're right. I forgot.
It's okay, but to the November meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so officially then, I'll just make a request that we remove it from the agenda and place it on the November.
12.
12, can we do it?
And change the.
Parcel number?
Yes.
Yes, correctly, yeah.
Which one was it?
And what was the parcel number to correct it to?
06 dash 225 dash 022.
And the other thing I wanted to ask about was, I guess along those lines, it says village, being picky, but it says village council added it. And because I don't remember us adding it, I don't know if it should be village council.
Just meant that y'all were going in the closed session, not that y'all added it.
Oh, that's true. Okay, got it. I'm not really sure.
Where are we talking about?
I'm still having trouble grasping the rules.
On the closed session.
It just says village council on the corner, on the side.
Oh.
And I didn't know what that meant.
It just implied that village council was going in.
It's going into it, all right. And I'm sorry, I'm just looking at my list to see if I have anything else I forgot. That's it. That's all I have. Sorry.
I'm good.
This is my end.
I was going to say, hold me. We got stuff to do.
All right.
All right, no, nothing further. So I need to adopt the agenda and amend it.
Moved.
Falls in favor?
Right.
Motion passes. Stuff is.
Village leaders to flag at the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments, we have anyone signed up?
You've got to roll over.
I know, I got to roll. No one signed up?
Got it.
Moving on, we will go into reports and update. We have reports and attorney update, a board compensation.
Okay. I was asked to look into how both this council and the other boards are compensated and how y'all may implement different measures if you choose in the future. First of all, you do have flexibility. Y'all are able to do this, to set compensation in any way that's reasonable that you want to do it. There are some strange provisions on when you do it, and I'll get to that at the end. Currently, we have, and y'all know this, y'all are on a monthly stipend. And that's regardless of the number of meetings, regardless of attendance. Your other boards are on a, they're paid by attendance for meetings. So if they have a meeting, they get paid. If they don't, they don't get paid. There is a little bit of, well, actually, there's a lot of difference. Village council, being a council member here, it's like day-to-day responsibilities. And even when you do miss a meeting, y'all have got to stay up to date. And you're going to try to catch up at the next meeting, or you're going to have the work session. So you probably want to look at, if you're going to make a change, I call it a hybrid approach. You'd have somewhat of a monthly stipend and then also a payment based upon the monthly meetings attended. Those can vary. You don't know if you're going to have one in a month that you're going to have a forum. Or sometimes maybe when you have the budget, y'all have the work session or some other meetings. But if you look at this, you probably don't want to just do a straight across-the-board numerical analysis where it stays even, because most people miss some meetings for good reason. And like I said, you're still going to have to stay up to date with all the materials to make it up at the next meeting. And I just gave an example of doing a small increase on the monthly stipend and then have a per-meeting attendance.
Decrease on monthly.
Yes, which would be a decrease. Yeah, a decrease on the monthly amount, but then you would get paid for each meeting that you attended. And you could look at this and see how the numbers work out based upon how many meetings you've had in average. The interesting thing with setting your compensation is the statute that says you have the flexibility and you get to establish it. Says you establish it at the time of passage of the budget. So you pass that with the budget amendment. But I think you're going to want to look at this and have parameters, because the budget in itself is hard enough to pass. So I think you're going to want to maybe have a draft resolution and some guidance so you know how to do it before that time, discuss it, look at some numbers, and then finalize it with the passage of the budget ordinance. And it's strange that you can't change during the year.
So we can't do it until we actually adopt the budget?
You cannot do it right now. You have to do it prospective going forward. So if you did it with the budget amendment, you could have it effective July 1st, which would really be for your first meeting in July, moving forward. I would have thought you could do it now, but that's why we review the statutes.
I have questions, but I'll wait for. Just to let you know, Mayor, I have questions, but I'll wait for you.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm just trying to.
And that's just a rough background kind of talking point memo of the steps. And I gave an example in there with a mathematical analysis that y'all could use. But you're going to want more background information, I think, before you establish the rates and fees.
Well, we have plenty of time if we choose to.
Yes, and this is just ideas, so you can move all the numbers around.
So just true to nature, you know, because we've done a lot of, spent a lot on legal fees. And I also know that I missed a couple of meetings. Was this a directive to research this? And whose directive was it? Was it the council?
I think I asked just to find out if there's something that we can look at because of what's been happening recently. We haven't seen the councilman, hasn't responded to any emails or anything, so I just asked. I was inquiring about if we could change it.
I just thought that we had agreed that the attorney's fees are pretty exorbitant, and I believe even for the contract, nothing on use Spencer at all. It's just that, and again, in this sort of making sure that we're watchful of funds and being accountable. I totally understand why this might be something that council said, yeah, let's spend money on researching this. But the fact that it wasn't really directed to the council is something that I feel is worthy of putting on the table. Aside from the fact that it might be great at conversation, aside from the fact it might be a worthy topic, it's just I have to point out that we've seen this before where one council member and/or mayor or staff or someone initiates a research project. And it's one thing if we're in the background calling for an hour that we're allowed to ask questions. It's another thing when you're actually throwing something on the agenda and, you know, asking him to do substantive research. So I just wanted to put that.
Well, I had asked Christina about it, and I'd also asked Joe about it.
It was a, it was a motion made in the meeting.
At the August 20. Yeah, it was, because I had, I got a copy of the instructions and it was at the August 29th meeting. So it was an instruction with the motion.
It's listed there as.
It was an actual motion second, yes.
Okay, that's all I was asking. That's why I said I was missing, so I don't know if that's what I heard, but I just wanted to be sure.
And it was on for, I believe, in all fairness, it was on for the work session to just discuss amongst ourselves. And then we got tight on time and we moved it. And I think at that time, this one, to have him look into the basic parameters is what I thought we agreed to.
He had the email that I, I think I may have sent you the exact motion.
You did. Council requested adding a change in their rules of procedure, which really, I probably wouldn't put it there, that addresses compensation for absent council members at council meetings.
And listen, I'm not going to tell you that attendance isn't important, because you know it is. I believe it is, and I believe it's a duty, and I've said that before, and I believe you chicken over. I mean, make a commitment. That said, we also don't always know what's going on in someone's life. And I think at the end of the day, for the most part, we let the voters choose, and they're accountable to the voters. And I expect that they will make their choice based on the performance of the council members that are elected. And there's no harm in highlighting it. I think this council's done a decent job of making sure that attendance is highlighted or problematic when they feel it is. But I just say for the record, I worry about the idea of using a policy like this that seems and appears to be a want to exact a particular action on a council member for their attendance when we don't know necessarily what's, you know, the reasons why that person might be absent. Has anyone else, is the mayor, have you reached out to?
I have.
You have?
Yeah, I think council has, I mean, staff has as well.
I haven't gotten any response.
Yeah, I haven't either. But I just was wondering.
Yeah, yeah, I did.
But in all fairness, to your point about people making the, you know, you decide in the voter box. I mean, there's two more years still on this, and that's what, and it's not going to probably be for me to decide anyways. It'll be for the next incoming council. But if you have one person continually not showing up for the next two years, that's $10,000. You want to talk about cost, and then, you know, I think that was money wisely spent with asking him to do it when we have a councilman that's not sure, not responding, in my understanding, to staff on anything. And two years can go by very quickly. It's already been since, I think, May, since we've heard from him. So just thought I'd be a good steward of the town's money, I guess.
I'm not discounting, like I said, I think I already said that, I do believe it's important. I just, I don't think it's above the electorate to, you know, pass judgment on that when it's their time either. So that's all.
Well, I mean, I agree that the electorates, you know, will pass judgment when the time comes. But we are compensating for somebody for something that they're not participating in. I mean, you know, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, even if you're not, you miss a meeting, but you've still got to, you know, be up on, you know, try and catch up or whatever for the next meeting and stuff. But unfortunately, we have, you know, what's going on right now is we haven't heard at all. I mean, there's been no communication, no catching up, no, no anything that I can see. You know, so I mean, I think in that way, you know, it's, it's, it would be a situation where.
And I just threw this out there. What if we, and I, because I'm in the same boat as the four of you. And I am, and the set does this. But what if something really happens happened, right? And we don't know that either. I would feel really badly if something had occurred and we didn't know.
Well, I've heard he's been spotted in his yard, so I know he's around, so it's.
I think there's a certain, I think there's a certain obligation. I mean, well, you know, you don't miss a winner, hate your laundry outs. Everybody, there's a certain obligation to let staff or somebody know that what the reason is. It's got to, you know, you just can't. Notch.
And to add to maybe what Chaplin was saying is the excessive amount of absences. And then, okay, so to get caught up, who's he going to go to? Is he going to go to council? Is he going to go to take up staff's time to say, okay? Or is he just going to, is he just listening to the minutes? We don't know. But hopefully, the minutes are there for them to do that. But I certainly don't want to take staff's time just to get them caught up either and more costs going to it. But it's just, it became excessive. I mean, we all have things happen in our lives and stuff. But because it's been so long, it's just, I thought was reason for at least to address it in a work session meeting and then go from there to a motion, so.
Good to know. Nothing else.
So bottom line, Chaplin can't do anything right now. But if you were going to do it, that would be during the budget decision and when they decide.
They'll probably start looking at it in January or February.
Yeah, because all the numbers you would want to look at and study. So you ought to, you ought to be thinking about it over the next few months, because with budget, you've got enough on your plate. You can't do anything now.
Does it have to be, sorry, because I'm just reading it out. Is it have to be, is this one of those policies or codes that has to be enacted uniformly across all members, public officers? You know how they have some.
No, it would be for, you'd have to have it applied to your council, you've established a council. But your other boards, you can compensate them differently, as you already do.
Right.
And I looked through briefly to see if there were any planning board requirements or if there's anything that can't get paid, and there was nothing in there.
So it would be a rule of policy change?
It'd be, yeah.
And given that it'd be policy change, I'll just go on the record too for saying that, like, I see your example of maybe just paying us all less, and then if you, that may be, that may work, that may be good. Why? I thought I shut her down.
Oh, and I figured y'all would move all around with numbers. You could go, you could go straight attendance, or you could keep it right now. Now it's straight service.
The only thing I concern is, you know, we made an exception for attending a meeting if you're sick or you're out of town. And if there's excessive, where that council person decides to go to the meetings via telephone, and then, you know, I mean, it's like, this is the time to be here in person. So just on further note, when we're looking at policy that we may not be involved, very likely, Nick and I won't be involved in that, but going forward, if that policy includes those sort of things, if they're going to go down this road of paying.
You could have what you call excuse absences and have the board vote when they notify ahead of time. I can't be there. I have this going on. You have to vote. Or you could do something, in fact, if you build in a cushion, three or four, three or four unexcused absences. And I'm thinking of my kids at school.
The planning board, I think they still do in the rules of procedure. Yeah. We have to, you're allowed up to three.
Up to three, and then after that, you may even move.
This is basically only for compensation.
Correct.
Because I mean, once, you can't remove anybody. You can't remove anybody, even if they come to no meeting. Once they're elected, they can come to no meetings. And you can't do anything about it. You know, so I mean, it's basically just.
Yeah.
It's basically.
Called an emotion, but it's a, it's a whole.
So from, just so I'm clear, so from the action, we were directed to, we've done that. So we're not going to do anything further from staff, it's the one we're directed to.
Right. So it'll be prior for the next council, when you guys are discussing budget. How you guys worked that out?
You're staying there for that. I would like to revisit it.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
I have a question for Chaplin.
Certainly.
Since we're doing the attorney thing. With the, I'm just going to call it the sidewalk swap issue that we have on Providence Road. Mary had brought up our buffer ordinance. And I just wanted to, if you, I didn't know if you had gotten any information about looking into that. Like what is our responsibility versus what is the neighborhoods versus DOTs?
Right, and I have gotten a request, and I think that was to have it for y'all's workshop.
Okay.
And I'd probably submit that in writing rather than your options and your legal ramifications. But I have gotten that instruction, so it's.
So you're working on that?
I am.
I mean, I know we got plenty of time, because it's not happening. Anytime, but I just wanted to, because Mary brought that up, so I wanted to make sure that you were on top of figuring out what our obligations are. That was it. Thank you.
And not to call anybody out, but how, maybe this is more for the minister. How have our legal bills been so far?
It's been like 23 or 24, so. Yeah, it's not pushed back.
It's not been pushed that far?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Chaplin.
Next up, we have administrative report.
I only have two things. I'm going to pass this out. Y'all have to read it with me.
2020, 2020. I think the last one, we finished at 27.
But I heard that, and now it's at 40.
Where do you guys start?
47. Now, did you just say 40? 2040 or make out, making up stuff now.
Y'all don't have to read this. I just wanted to let you know, we entered an agreement with DOT.
What am I doing? It's the other way. I need to give you the plan.
DOT a couple of months ago, in reference to us maintaining the roundabout grass maintenance. I think I told y'all at the time, they were going to reimburse us $150 bucks. It's gone down even further than that, so just wanted to let you know.
How nice. How much?
They didn't say, but it's going to be less than $150 bucks.
Well, how, so they're just like, we're just not going to pay you as much, we're not going to tell you how much we're going to give you?
Well, they allot, they allotted seven, I think it was seven to eight mows per year. And whatever that was, divided by seven, now they're only allotting four. So whatever the number is divided by.
Like that, there's no way that that even follows their code of having like grass cut, like, and like weeds that tall.
I just wanted to let y'all know.
Public health and safety.
Yes. Okay. Thanks, Christina.
And then second, I just wanted to let you know, oh, yeah, three things actually. Rohit came and asked if Chaplin could be at the next planning board meeting. We have some stuff that needs some legal opinion, so I'd authorize him to allow that. There's no objection for that to happen.
For what again?
The next planning board meeting.
For him to attend?
Yes. Do we want to do that in the planners' report, just so if someone's looking for? I would just say, you know, whenever we can try to give it a logical, you know, look up on the meeting agenda, might be a good place to put it.
And actually, this, what I was, I was going to say something else, but y'all have another item on the agenda that you had brought up that might be better to bring that up at this point. I've got the sample ballot.
Oh, cool.
Just wanted to show it to y'all.
Yes.
And you had some language in here about the referendum, and that's in here, so maybe we just hold that until.
Yeah, that's fine. Cool. Thank you.
I'll just give that to you and you can pass it out whenever.
Okay, thanks. It becomes my turn.
And that's all I have for now. But you have something on the roads report if you want to let Rohit go, and then I'll go.
Okay. All right, next up, we have planners' report. Rohit?
All right. So there's a few things that I want to update you guys on. Ross Odell, who's got the 25 acres at the corner of Meadowlark and Newtown Road, submitted a rural subdivision application. Few iterations occurred, and I approved the sketch plan. So he's going to be moving on to preliminary construction plat. When that comes around, the planning board will see it, and then you'll see it a few months away. But it's just eight lots, two to three acres each lot, very Marvin-esque compared to previous designs.
Were the access points, do you know? Is that addressed?
It will be one road off of Meadowlark.
Off of Meadowlark?
Right, but there's a, there's a complication where there's a, that was a private street, right? But the leg of the roundabout that's being realigned is going to be public, so that's where this time is going to be.
Okay.
So he's going to come in on the leg?
Yeah.
I knew that was going to happen. That's coming in?
The Meadowlark leg.
Yeah.
But it homes better in 22.
Hold on, but it's coming in, and so it's going to, oh, so it would just like connect there.
Yeah, it would just be a side street off of Meadowlark, but it's going to be off of the realigned portion.
If DOT will let them have a driveway.
Right, right. They just submitted their sketch plan, so they don't have a driveway access permit or anything. It's just a sketch plan.
Gotcha. Do you know what the number of feet is off the inner proposed intersection is?
I measured it, but I saw it was well past the splitter, so it's got even more than 50.
I said, yeah, usually they require 150, minimum 75, so that'll be interesting. But okay, that's, that's great.
I'm glad it was in for the something that's encouraging.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, it'd be timely too, probably, because the roundabout's good.
Right. Right.
Okay.
So the rezoning for the commercial quarter, conditional district, they had their second public involvement meeting. Lots of residents, turned out, people are a little upset about it. I'd say, you know, half the people just oppose it outright, and half the people are just not happy about the site. Anyway, there was kind of a conception that they wanted council to be more involved in the process at this point. And so the next week's planning board meeting, they will be discussing, the planning board will be discussing as part of their second review. The ordinance has, you know, two reviews, and I would highly encourage any of you that can attend to attend that meeting.
Okay, so I have to halt you, because this has been kind of on my mind the last.
Yeah, sure.
We talked about how the ordinance actually highly suggests, if not makes it mandatory, I can't remember now, that the planning board meet with the council for direction. And I mean, one of the main reasons for having written that in in more substantive terms was because that is what we found in our experience, is that the applicant, developers, residents, they watch this entire thing go through an advisory board. They get very, very passionate about the issues on the table. And it's a long wait between application, PIM, planning board review, planning board review, public comments, planning board review, and without ever seeing the council. And I'm telling you this as a former planning board member. I could see that that was something everybody felt they needed. They needed to know that their leadership was present. So one of the questions I had for you today was, what's happening with the joint meeting between the council and planning board?
The next planning board meeting can be a joint meeting if you want it to be.
But how come, did somebody choose to just jump over that step?
It's not required to be.
Is it, but it is, it is a high, it'd be suggested, and I just thought you had suggested at the last meeting, you were hoping for that meeting to occur.
Yes, and that meeting is going to be next week, so.
I think we discussed it, and we said. I think we discussed it, and we said we were going to talk about it again, but we did discuss having a joint meeting.
Okay, so I'm confused, are you saying that the planning board is just having a meeting next week, and we should attend and kind of watch the proceedings? Or are you saying there's a planning board meeting, and you would like to make it a joint meeting?
Well, it's recommended that it's a joint meeting of council. So if you want, if you could, if you want to make it a joint meeting, that, that's what the ordinance recommends. But in addition to that, you know, if you could just attend the meeting, you know, and provide the input that residents that will be there are looking for, either one would be fine.
Okay, so I have a question for the council. Keep going for that. I'll just put this out there, and then we can think about it. I'm just thinking, whether we add it to the agenda for a discussion, or we keep it here, I'm not sure. I prefer, I like to have things on the agenda, but I know you guys are sometimes opposed to adding things to the agenda as well. It feels like that should be a discussion, because nobody knows the way development and passions blow up in this small village better than I do. Nobody. So, I would highly advise we discuss it.
I mean, I would like to discuss it, because I've gotten emails, and I accept Rohit an email, and I, I mean, we have another village event next Tuesday that I'm taking my son to, so I can't go to the planning board meeting. He wants to go see the snakes at the barn, so, you know, if I'd have known about it, I'd have.
I'll be in Raleigh, too.
Yeah. Nick's going to be in town.
I'll be going to New York.
Yeah.
I was going to come just to sit in, but I wasn't going to answer any questions, I just was more to observe and stuff. I didn't think it was, I didn't think that request by you was something more of a joint meeting.
So then why don't we, so then can we add this to the agenda to, as a, I guess unfinished business? Or is it a new business? I don't even know what it is.
Well, I think it could be under unfinished since you'd already discussed it at the previous meeting.
You need a motion to suspend the rules and add that to the agenda.
No, you don't have to suspend the rules.
Just add it. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to add the commercial corridor conditional district at Providence Road to unfinished business item number four. Y'all. That'd be super duper.
Is it just general discussion, or discussion of a joint meeting?
I think it's both.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah. So I don't go to outside, color outside the lines.
I think you can, I think we're going to go broad strokes on this one.
All right.
Okay. So. Rohit's got one more on his list.
Okay. Well, that motion's on the table, though, right?
Oh.
Sorry.
Sorry?
Also a favor.
Hi.
Motion passes. Okay, you have one more?
Yeah, I was just going to say that Marvin Gardens is progressing well. I've, I've been on the site, just to confirm that their development is going, so far, you know, it's sticking to the town plan, they're doing a good job.
Good. No parking garages or anything like that.
Right, right. I mean, so far.
Did you see that train come up? It's out.
Right, right, I mean, so far they've only cleared trees, but they've preserved the buffer. There was one gentleman that had his concerns about the buffers, but they were.
What are they doing with all that building?
Um, I don't know.
Because if you go over the residential portion, it actually starts to.
They're just pushing it back there?
That's, I think, the plan.
And I saw the leasing flyer.
And no tenants with.
Like conditional or whatever it was, tentative, like there was a couple of slots that were tentative but no names. So.
They said they would let me know when.
Let me know Publix?
Well.
I hope their name's on there.
Yeah, I think Publix is on there. But like, with all the out parcels.
And the homes are still.
Yeah, two or three tentatives.
When are they scheduled to go?
Good point. The, the homes are being developed by different developer. Sorry, the homes, the homes are being developed by Sossi Burbank, which is a different developer than the commercial portion.
Different, because they were kind of wavering the last.
Yes, they actually did just submit the preliminary construction plans for the residential section. So the planning board is going to be seeing that at their next meeting, and it's largely the same as their zoning documents, so the discussion should not take more than twenty minutes.
So refresh my memory, twenty-three or twenty-four homes?
Uh, twenty-five?
Oh, is it twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty-five.
It's the, it's the revised version, right, with the big green, the green space in the center?
Yes.
Okay.
You should have seen it before.
Um, no, then once that goes to planning board, it will come to council.
Good.
All right, next up, roads report. Christina?
Just wanted to let you know that they have completed all of the road resurfacing, we've actually had very good positive commentary from public. There are some concerns that are still left in Firethorn that are being addressed, so if anyone's listening, we are still working in there, cleaning up things and making some repairs, so.
So have they figured out what that water issue is?
They have not yet. They're looking into it, though.
So just so the record. Drive coming in?
Every day it's there, it's there every day, so I think whatever we fixed, up and down, water finds its path of least resistance, and it's, it's puddling there, but it's been there since they've left.
I do want to make note that the speed tables that are in Firethorn were actually in an encroachment agreement with DOT. Firethorn has the, the HOA has the, has the right to maintain those, they have to.
Right.
They have to do so, and we let them know prior to the resurfacing that they potentially may be damaged in the process of resurfacing, and it would be their responsibility to fix them if they were. I think there has been some damage to those speed tables. Marvin is not on the hook for that, so the HOA may get a little upset.
I, I seem to remember that, that when we put those in in our neighborhood, that we were always going to be responsible for that regardless, so the only thing that.
They can go faster.
Yeah, they may have lowered. Actually, they cleaned them up. They do need a little bit of, with the new roads, they need, I don't know what you do to dress them up, maybe A&amp;T could recommend what the HOA pays for to get. I know they need to be repainted and just break, I know there was a lot of tar that they got most of that up, but it still looks a little.
And they're still trying to get some of it up, but I just wanted to let y'all know that if the HOA says anything, we did let them know in advance that they could potentially be messed up, that it would be their.
A lot, a lot of good feedback, though, from overall, but I don't know about other neighborhoods, but I've heard for the most part, very good comments and stuff.
I know we're not there yet, but I don't want to forget, per action item, that reminds me, one of the things among many in our road policies that we've missed is traffic calming devices. It's been on for years, we had a traffic calming committee, we discussed different things we'd implement, and now that we're taking roads, I haven't seen that come up as an issue, and including when there are traffic calming devices in place, what will happen to them when the roads are accepted?
Would that be a good place to talk about in the road acceptance policy spot?
Yeah, I don't know about the scope of that, but just an action item, I just wanted to throw it on there. Sorry, y'all, I forgot, I had one more question for Rohit. Can I go back to planning for a minute? Do you mind?
Sure.
It's really quick. The survey that we ended yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a general update, or?
Yeah, yeah, completely, just give my mind.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll tell you about that. Survey closed yesterday, we were accepting paper copies until the end of the day, and we will have the results by in the next two or three weeks, and then planning board will start deliberating on what that means for the land use plan after that, after starting their November meeting.
Will the council get a presentation of those?
Uh, Cog, Jessica from Cog said that she'd be glad to present if you would like her to.
I think it's probably a good idea.
Do we have any idea of the return, I mean, like the percentage of homes that participated?
Yeah, she told me at the end of last week that it was roughly three hundred and fifty responses, so probably around four hundred or so.
And we have how many homes?
Um, it's about two thousand.
About how many?
Two thousand.
Only two thousand homes?
Only two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have the survey results in my little ten thirty-one marker, I've got an earmark, so I have.
I was sure in twenty twelve, the number was like two, twenty-four hundred. So that would be lower.
I bet you got it and you got for now.
No, I don't think that's correct.
What's that?
There are only twenty-one hundred and something parcels in Marvin, so not all of them are homes. It's at around two thousand.
But did they just get home, do only homes get it, or do parcel owners get it?
Well, parcel owners will get it, too.
Okay. All right. I was just curious. Sorry to knock us off, though.
So they almost said, what, three fifty?
Yeah, four hundred, maybe, that's twenty percent.
We'll get the parcel total count for you.
Okay. So can we ask for the results to be provided to us at our work session meeting?
Yeah.
Even if it's just not a presentation, just frequencies?
Yeah. I mean, can you not present them? Does Cog need to present them?
Well, no, that's, that's why I said if she needs to, she can, but I can also present them.
We should have them back before then, but if we have them back before ten thirty-one, we'll do it, if we don't, we'll have to do it.
Do it in the November meeting if we don't have them back. I don't know why Cog needs to do it.
It's automatic. All you have to do is hit print on frequencies and it'll come up.
Yeah.
FYI, speaking of Cog, who's the alternative, do we know? Because I can't make the lead.
Mary is.
Mary?
It's out.
We're talking about CRTPO then.
Cog.
Oh, I don't know who the cog is. Sorry, 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 sorry.
I don't think it's me.
It's not me.
I don't think it is.
I think I, it came up, and they asked me if I was going to make that meet, it's tomorrow night at six-thirty, and it's up in Charlotte, and I can't remember who the alternate.
Maybe it was?
I think it's Mary, because Nick was. Nick was the.
Mary, you're not doing anything.
But he was also for Cog, too.
I'm tired.
But I'll go if I have.
But I'll, I'll check my records and let you know.
Tomorrow night?
I'll, I'll let, you said it was tomorrow night?
Yes, six-thirty.
Is it still six-thirty?
Six-thirty?
Okay. I'll check my records and let you know.
You can give somebody a hard job before the night before.
Well, I just got a reminder, and then I realized that my conflicts are every other week on that Wednesday, and it is.
Well, the clerk used to send me an email, asking about, inquiring about, you know, the delegate and the alternate, but I don't get a.
Maybe you should email her, maybe you should email them and say, give me the updates.
This is CRTPO. Am I, am I, I may be confused. But Cog is the one that sent me the email, though, and asking about it. Let me get back to you on that.
You sure?
I'll, I'll check it. I'll check it, I just know I had a conversation with her email, which is.
Okay.
Well, in the meantime, I'll, I'll confirm.
In the meantime.
I will confirm who's the alternate is.
And, and ask them why you're not getting the updates.
Okay.
And if it is me.
Then please get updates.
I'll need an address.
It's tomorrow, it's a meeting tomorrow, but there's also a meeting for CRTPO, there's two meetings.
Oh, tomorrow, two?
Yeah.
And you're not going to either?
No.
Oh, they're both tomorrow night? Really? Are they a joint meeting?
Well, I, well, it shows on my schedule, the ninth is a meeting for CRTPO, but that,
Mayor, is this for the executive board or for the board of delegates?
Board of delegates.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it definitely is for Cog tomorrow. Yeah, I have an email here saying, or discussing that that was.
I'll let you know, Mary.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Sorry about the late notice, too, so. It's, I mean, a lot of times they have like work session things, and you just role play and talk to other.
Like drama class.
Sort of.
Okay.
But it's, 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 it's good to.
You're busy now, right?
I haven't taped it. It's actually very good.
Next.
All right, so you're done, right?
Yeah.
Anything else you want to remember? Mine did.
Well, we were actually in road, so I don't know.
Down roads.
All right. All right, moving forward, deputies' report.
I don't know if everybody knows, but the offender from Waything Chase was caught. He's also the same one that did the graffiti, so they linked everything to him. Unfortunately, he's out, he made bond, so hopefully it's a one-time incident, it don't happen again, but.
Okay.
That's scary.
Looking, when I was looking earlier, it seemed pretty quiet, so that's pretty much the same other than that.
There was a lot of time I never spent on that, but I'm just glad, I'm glad he was called, I know everybody else is too. The cameras is what, is what got him called, so.
Like rain cameras?
All the cameras, like rain nest, blink, wow.
Can I ask this question?
That's what got him, the cameras, so.
Well, see, did graffiti during that same stint?
The graffiti was like two months ago.
It was two months ago.
Yeah, and it was all kind of spread out over like two or three months.
Okay.
He's been charged with like six or seven things with that, involved graffiti, so.
I'm just wondering, because they mentioned it in articles, but they didn't say.
I think they got, in, in an article, they got this address on, because I didn't recognize And I think they got, in, in an article, they got his address wrong, because I didn't recognize the street address either.
So what's the article say is, street address was?
I can't remember what it was, but I had never heard it before. Maybe that's why I was, not that I know all the streets in Marvin, but I, it just threw me as at this.
I didn't think he lived in Marvin. I thought it was in Incorporated Indian County.
Yeah, I didn't get an article with his address listed, so, but I got the impression it was not the same.
Yeah.
It's not Western.
Yeah, but he is in Marvin.
He's not, he's not a Marvin resident, but he's not far away.
It's like right across the street. I mean, well, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
And I wanted to let everyone know too that Deputy Ethan and I have gone through the call volumes over the last quarter and we're trying to overlay his scheduling with the higher peak times and that's working out really good. So we, we're right on point with where he should be in his schedule.
Back to that story for a second, he could dwell on it. So would, was he, does he live within walking distance of that trail?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, yeah, that's always been our issue with Greenways, right? I mean, they're great, but.
Was he a student of Bob's?
There's some people worrying about it now.
Yes.
And there was no motive. They don't know any, yeah, that's what I understand.
Okay, alright.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, we have planning board chair report.
I'm gonna be playing off ahead.
Okay.
By the way, we're getting prepared for half a week, not earlier today.
You wanna meet with us?
Sure, you're welcome. Glad to have you.
Can we do something in the next couple of months or joining or something?
Will we talk about that when we get there?
Well, it's, it's planned.
Well, I know, but we're gonna talk about that, to talk about that.
You've already added it to your agenda to discuss.
Sorry, my bad. Alright, we'll talk about this. Alright, uh, PR and G Joe report. Mary, she's not here.
She's not here, but I wanted to mention one thing if you don't know, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
She did send an email, um, or someone sent an email about the garden tour that they did and they had over forty visitors.
Wow.
So they're planning on doing it again. It was a very successful event and so we wanna give them an applause for doing that.
It was very nice.
Yeah. You know, we used to do certificates. Remember that? When we had events, we used to do certificates for volunteers.
Oh.
Little, like little village certificates and.
Like the village thank you?
Cards to thank you, thank volunteers and board members, especially the PR and G used to get them because they were often putting on events.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, just a thought. I'll just leave it with y'all.
I like that video. We could look into it. You guys can look into it.
Yeah, because that's a, I was really impressed with that initiative and then it was successful on top of that, which I think is great.
Wonder why it stopped.
Which the, so the, changeover probably.
We'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay.
Alright, next up, we have consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Go move it.
On the paper.
Hi.
Motion passes. Next up, we have village hall. We have zero minutes of, uh, signed.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Moving on.
So move to table.
Y'all had just asked to have it on there until we do something, so we're just putting it in there as a placeholder. We don't forget about it.
Okay, it doesn't matter then?
Yeah, it'll, it'll stay in there indefinitely until we don't need it anymore.
Okay, next up, are you guys finished business?
Twenty forty.
Good luck. Discussion and consideration of road acceptance policy.
Okay. So I'll, I'll start real fast. We've got the road acceptance policy that we prepared a few months back with some changes. We're actually waiting on AMT to finish up some of their review and we want to incorporate this policy into our specs manual. So it's in one place. And that's, that's kind of why we were pushing it off, because we're waiting to get that specs manual redone. There's a couple of changes that y'all made over the course of the road resurfacing, where you added in some typicals for the manholes and where the curb and gutters match up. We had to add some of those into that specs manual and we're going through and making that process right now and that should be ready to come to you all for consideration at the next meeting.
So, can I ask a question? So that specs manual, it will be part of the road acceptance policy?
That's what we're asking the road acceptance policy, be incorporated into the spec manual. As it stands right now, it's a standalone policy in and of itself. We want, we want it incorporated into the spec manual.
But is the spec manual gonna be a policy?
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so then the.
It's a manual that, that developers have to follow and we, we can, Chuck, Chucklin, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can approve it as a resolution and have it a little bit more enforceable that way.
Yep.
So we can enforce it as a policy by adoption of resolution.
That's nice. I don't know, because this can go in so many different directions, because there's a road acceptance and then there's road resurfacing and up until now, they've kind of combined everything. But I'll just say that generally though, when you go to a municipality, right, the road manual is very construction oriented, you know what I mean? Like, yeah, there might be some policy in there, but I just wanna, I just worry, or I just think we should need to be mindful, and not even me, but the next council, about what kinds of policies you're melding into a manual. Because for the most part, when people are looking for construction standards, they go to a manual. They don't necessarily go there for policy, if you know what I'm saying. And road acceptance policy, it might be a little different than. Resurfacing, I can see. Road acceptance is a little different.
That's what I was gonna ask, because when, when I hear road acceptance policy, that is after it has been paved, after it is up to snuff and the DOT is ready to give it to us. Like, that's what I hear. So when I hear resurfacing plan with the manhole and the curb and gutter and all that stuff, I feel like that's.
Separate issues.
Huh?
Separate.
Totally separate. So I feel like that are, okay, so I'm not wrong there. Like, that's, those are two separate.
Yeah.
That's the way I look at it.
Okay.
And we can keep them separate. That's totally fine. We just had some language in here in the road acceptance policy that we felt like needed to be in, or certain portions of it, I should say, like the pavement core results. Like, those are, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, do we have anything in there currently about having core samples in our specs manual? We tell them how to build the road in the spec manual, but we don't actually relate back to the core example.
You know, there, I can pull it up. There, there was a section of the road manual that, same idea. For lack of knowing where else to put it at the time, because especially then, road acceptance went hand in hand with resurfacing. There's a few pages at the front that do kind of hit on policy. I can't remember off the top of my head. I can look it up. But, um, again, that's why this road acceptance policy is getting messy, but it has to be done if we're getting serious about it.
Well, and I don't, I mean, for me, this document that we have in here, I don't like the, I don't like having the five-year plan. I don't like this eight to ten-year plan, because it just can change. And, and that's when everything kind of, you know, got all messed up in the spring when we were talking about this stuff. It's because it was like, well, here, here's what it's gonna be. This is what our policy is. I think this holds us too much to, like, not allowing us to change as we're reevaluating the roads.
And there's certain portions of this that's in here that needs to be in a road resurfacing policy. Like, it's, and there's certain portions of it that's in here that needs to be in a spec manual.
Yeah, especially as y'all get newer neighborhoods and now that you're accepting roads, because you're gonna have new roads with new neighborhoods. We talked about a couple in here.
Right.
And there, that's when it's gonna be different from the.
Right.
What, what we essentially need to do is kind of draw a line and say, this goes in this policy, this goes in this policy.
Okay.
But, but majority of what you see here will be in the specs manual and that's, AMT will have some input into what they think needs to be in there versus what they don't.
I just think those two things need to be separate.
Yes.
Because one is after it's done, we're accepting them into Marvin, or after a new neighborhood's done, we're accepting them into Marvin versus if we're doing this, this is how they need to be done for the developer or DOT, right?
Yes, there's that. And so I'm even gonna break it one further than that. That's true. And that's definitely road manual territory.
Right, right.
In terms of specs and construction. I'm not saying it can't be policy. It could be.
But don't you think that also needs to be in the policy too? Because then if you're looking at it, these, like, if we're taking them, this is how they need to be. So it's kind, like, you don't have to have them all in there, but you need to have, if we're taking them, they've gotta have, you know, A, B, C, X, Y, Z.
They have to meet with this criteria.
You got, right.
I agree. Now, and that's gonna lead to another.
Alright, I think that's hard to keep on.
No, but you're, you're, you're right. The next level to that is now thinking about, we've accepted these roads. I know that we're sort of still in this phase where it almost feels like we're just taking, I'm really not a hundred percent sure how it is, if it's decided what we're taking. It seemed like we made a policy about what, how we're gonna take the roads in terms of the, are we on this topic?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, just wanted to make sure. All of a sudden, you know the pavement conditioning study?
Yep.
It seemed to be based on that, but then, um, even in, in terms of using that to let us guide what roads take over, there's another two points there. Sometimes it seems to be they're going to take care of the roads that, so they're finding a subdivision, right? They're comparing the subdivisions. It's almost as if they're going to the lowest score of all subdivisions, across subdivisions, right? And letting that really bad road motivate you to do the whole subdivision. That's what it feels like. That's what's happened.
That's, that's a discussion we'll have when they do their support on the rating system, the road resurfacing schedule of how we're gonna carry that out.
So that's like gonna be a third policy.
Yes.
On how we.
Rate?
Yeah, but we're not rating them.
We're how?
What order the roads are going in. And from the time that I've been attending meetings, it's always, everybody has always said, we don't wanna pick, we don't wanna choose, we want AMT and DOT to figure that out. And that's, from my knowledge, that's what we've been do, that's what we did before and that's what happened.
But, but on that point, just so I just want to finish, I, I get that, right, I think that's the intent.
Right.
But I think if we start now to think about long-term, all of these roads eventually get resurfaced, right? So right now, there's been sort of this holistic approach, oh, well, if we're gonna do that road in that subdivision, just do all of them. The only problem I have with that, if we don't instate something that's a little more routine, regular and well-thought-out, you're going to have roads coming up at random, subdivision by subdivision, or at random for resurfacing. And so, if you follow what I'm saying, and if we go on a subdivision by subdivision policy, which is kind of what we're doing now, I see a lot of problems with that in the sense that not all roads within a subdivision get the same wear. They're not all built to the same standards. So for example, the entryway roads, right? So aside from just measuring the actual, um, concrete and pavement conditions, I think there also needs to be, in terms of putting this into a long-term cycle, that we're removed from, evaluating where the road is in the subdivision, what other uses are there, the traffic and volumes that are expected. Do you see what I mean? Like, there are a lot of other factors that should go into whether or not a road needs to be resurfaced every ten years, every fifteen years, every twenty years. And so I feel, I don't know when the right time is to focus on that, but I think it's gotta be something that has to be started.
I think we went, go ahead.
Wasn't that originally part of the, part of the thing with subdivisions and the roads was that to get the most bang out of DOT as far as they would, in other words, you got two bad roads here and instead of, well, it's gonna cost us X amount of dollars to do these two really bad roads and the rest of the roads in the subdivision aren't so bad, but we'll do the whole, you know, we can do the whole subdivision, because it's not gonna cost us as much due to the rest of it.
That's the sense I'm getting, yeah.
Yeah, and that was the.
There was another point, if you remember, DOT, they're moving a lot of equipment. When they come in just to do a little section, they're not gonna want, they're gonna wanna do basically all of it. So it involves, so there certainly were some areas in Firethorn that didn't need as much, but they did it all because they were all there and, and that's, that was the thing. Going forward, I think you're right. I think we, and once we, once we have all the roads under our, under our village, then I think that policy comes to the point where, and I don't think we'll be big enough to have our own crew, but when we subcontract it, we can say, okay, we're not gonna do all of Firethorn, but we're gonna do this main corner.
Well, yeah, definitely, definitely when we now control all the roads, they're ROs anyway.
Yeah, you get to decide. Really work that mercy a little bit.
Yeah, so I really think it's gotta be three policies.
So if I, if I can interject real fast, there's certain portions of the policy that's here that I have kind of specified what I feel like needs to be in the spec manual, which includes the very last core result and then, and then pretty much half and half of the acceptance of existing, half the existence of newly constructed, needs to be in the spec manual. Now, from the road resurfacing, pavement preservation program, whatever you wanna call it, the first paragraph and then a portion of the acceptance of DOT roads needs to be in that policy. So there's two different policies that are needed here. One, half of it needs to go in the spec manual. Secondly, half of it needs to be in this pavement preservation program that we listened to AMT's pitch when they come back at the work session or the November meeting to say, this is our ranking. How do you wanna formulate that into a plan? It's, it's more or less a plan and we'll have a program to, to have guidance as to how we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
Based on, you know, previously, we had done five years where we later determined five years is not feasible. Um, so we've moved it to eight to ten years. So we've already kind of talked about that transition. We just need to kind of get it in, in a formatted plan and that's what AMT is, is hopefully to do when we get the surveys back and they show us how the roads rank and condition, then we can decide how we're gonna, to scale those. Does that make sense?
Where, where we getting the spec manual?
The spec manual?
Are we, are we that one?
Yeah, maybe they just adopted it.
Here, hundred and twenty pages.
Yeah. Um, and so maybe you wanna broad, I mean, for now, because there's probably gonna be a lot of phases of this until the roads are all owned. Maybe we should be broadening the term of the manual, so it's not just, you know, road.
What is, what do we call it? Road standard manual?
No, it's called engineering standard procedure.
Yeah, which is pretty typical when we're just talking construction. But if you're getting, pulled in policy, I think we might have to amend something there.
So what, again, this is, this is something that AMT, I would like for AMT to be here for their professional recommendation on how they think the, um, the pavement preservation plan and program and policy should be. Is there anything that y'all want me to have them prepare or research before?
Yes, so I think, if now that I'm remembering, I think at the last meeting, one of the reasons I wanted to kind of keep it on the agenda was to hopefully get council's agreement on asking staff to investigate a couple of things and start to prepare a couple of things so that these things can be thought of. The only part, portion where I was confused was, is that really what you're proposing in your changes is a lot smaller in scope than I think we were talking about originally, right?
Yes.
We were talking about all of the different moving parts.
Yes.
So, so I don't get too far ahead of myself. I was thinking, I, I thought perhaps the upcoming discussion, the one that I would like information for, might be at least an initiative to begin that, those policy discussions.
Yes.
But I'm not sure if that's what the intent is. Is the, it is?
Yes.
Yeah?
The intent is for us to look at the survey that they come back with, where we see, and I'm just gonna use neighborhoods. Firethorn ranks a hundred, Innisbrook ranks fifty, and then y'all decide based on those, and I'm just using those neighborhoods, but we could say different roads, these roads, and then y'all basically say, we're gonna index them based on X, Y, Z. Maybe it's not subdivisions anymore. Maybe it's worst, worst road first. I don't know, whatever it is. Once we see the results, then AMT will be there to provide some guidance as to this is, this is why you should do it this way. This is why you should do it that way. Leading back to one of the discussions about mobilization, the mobilization cost. When you're talking about just subdivisions, you're gonna have an increased cost if you're doing worst-case roads first, because you're gonna be moving from point A to point B, point A to point B.
So I got that. And so my interim suggestion, when we go back, I don't know, several months ago, because ultimately, I think there need, we need to have a little more thorough classification system of roads, right? That's eventual. But in the meantime, I think I brought it up at the time and I still feel pretty strongly about this, this idea that we are talking about an aggregate score, or we're basing the average score of all roads within a subdivision. If that's still the most convenient way to do it, if you know what I'm saying. And I don't know that we, I know that that's not, none of this is gonna be perfect, because right now, we're contracting with NCDOT and they're also going to get in there. But in terms of us truly being removed, it feels like the best way to do that, based on what I've observed over the years, is really for there, for there to be an average. Um, yeah.
And, and so I, I'm not a road expert or by any means, but there's a couple of flawed ways to look at it, in my opinion. When you look at just an average across the board, when you, when you talk about a subdivision, you could have a subdivision that has twelve miles of road. And if, you know, ten of those miles are horrid and then you have another subdivision over here that's one mile, but they're, they're great, then you're gonna, your average is gonna be affected by the number of lanes.
I get that.
So we, we need to have a formula base and I think that's what AMT will help us to guide those, those types of decisions.
See, that's where I get nervous, because if we're truly talking about an objective measure, because I understand what you're saying, but the minute that we begin saying, okay, taking that average score and, um, you know, and trying to then use judgment on top of that, we're back to where we were, where we're essentially kind of tipping a scale. I'm not saying that the average is perfect, but it is truly the most objective way to pick out which ones are, in which subdivisions are in the worst shape. I mean, let's say that all the ones we've done, or a lot of the ones we would've done, would've ended up in that exact place. But maybe not all of them. Like, you know, Weddington Chase, for example, had one really bad road and then the rest of them were, they were okay. And so it seems fair in the end that we're going to the worst subdivisions first.
And you could do, you could do the rating based on divided by the number of miles, the total number of miles.
There's another option, yeah.
So that, that's another option that, you know, we can see what AMT does. They, they do this every day, all day, so they probably have ideas that we haven't thought of yet.
I just haven't seen that and, you know, I don't wanna make assumptions about what else they'll do. It's just that it feels like in the last few years, whether it was me here or on the other side, watching AMT come forward, I've, I've often seen them throw that spreadsheet down, but I haven't really seen a lot in terms of coming up with a better measurement other than pavement.
And that's where we'll initiate that, that discussion with them. What do you guys recommend in terms of now that we see this? Can you help us take out a policy of how we, how we can make?
They haven't done that to date?
They have not, no. They know that that's in the works and that's the plans.
Okay.
But they're, they're waiting for you all to give some recommendation as to how you would like to see it.
I would like for them to be prepared to give us some options.
Okay.
Something they can enforce, truly measured, right? I think, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
Objective.
Objective, but also, I can't think of the word, like flowchart-based in the sense that, you know.
Oh, if the answer is yes, then you go here. If it's no, then you go there, like that?
Right, and again, it's an aggregate. Like, something is worth a percentage of a score, right? You've got a score and you say, well, the pavement is worth fifty percent of an overall score. But then not the, the, the frequency that that road or subdivision or the size of that subdivision is another, another part of the aggregate score. There's, there's gotta be other ways where they can truly measure all these factors and, and get us on the right path.
The only, and the only problem with that is, I'll say, when you get into a pavement preservation program, a true preservation program, you have roads that their subbase is perfect.
Yeah, that's another factor.
The joke, for instance. Y'all, y'all grounded, the subbase is great. We don't have to touch that road until twenty years. Now, let's just say Canterfield or Firethorn, we didn't, we didn't go in and, well, all we did was profile mill it. So that road may need to be addressed within, you know, ten years.
Right.
So when we, when we put in a policy that you're gonna do worse roads first or do an aggregate, you're not, you're not truly looking at preserving the good, the good neighborhoods for a longer period of time.
Well, see, actually, I think it's the opposite in the long-term. What we were just talking about, how you might not wanna do just this road and this road, right? We don't wanna, it's probably not feasible to do that. In the long-term, what you're saying though, is that this aggregate score that I'm talking about, or this way of evaluating, is, they, they should come up with a way of evaluating based on construction standards, the current standards now, right? Not just, so not just the current condition of the road, but also the, um, the characteristics of the construction of the road. Do you see what I mean? And I'm just talking a couple of factors. But one that, I'll say for now, without getting too in the weeds, is something that isn't strictly based on pavement condition, long-term.
Well, you wanna look at the pavement condition period and figure out what you're gonna do.
You don't.
Short-term.
Mm-hmm.
Like Heritage Oak, for instance, we would wanna come back probably within ten years and do a quick little profile mill or just an overlay.
How do you determine that? So that's kind of the point, that's kind of gets to the crux of what I'm saying. Because that's what is eventually taking over roads is gonna be. So how is it that we're go, what is the system for evaluating going forward? We've got all the roads. How is the cycle moving to decide what roads are getting what?
You will have to continuously survey the roads. I mean, it needs to be done every ten, five to ten years. I, I don't know the, the perfect number, but.
So Mayor, you're talking about, once we've got all the roads in and they've all been resurfaced, what's the long-term plan? Not necessarily what's the plan to get all the roads in.
I'm actually kinda going all over the place to apologize.
No, that's why I'm trying to.
Yes, I'm talking about that, but I'm also saying that in the short-term, two things. Can we devise a better score of selecting for AMT or whoever to select what, let's just say, or let's just say what subdivisions to do next, right? Something that's a little more fair, a little more. And then also, long-term, can they begin to think about, what's this gonna look like as we rotate through these roads again with a second type? That's all.
And that's kind of what they're doing now, because you have to look at, when you, you talk about profile milling versus pulled-up reclamation, you're looking at, you know, over here, this much money is over here, it's this much money. you're looking at, you know, over here, this much money is over here, it's this much money. So when you're trying to do the pavement preservation, you want to kind of balance out, do a little bit of bad roads now, do a little bit of good roads now. So you're not doing such a high intense resurfacing plan.
All bad roads.
It's so funny you mention that, because when they first, years ago, when this was first presented to me as an idea, one of the things I said, well, it almost makes sense to do almost exactly like, like that. Accept a lot of really good roads that you're not expecting to have to maintain, right? And then balance that with some other bad roads that you know you're going to, otherwise you're going to be inundated and with funding, you know, concerns.
And that's why the, the number, the average is hard to do, because it really should be driven by the dollar amount. Not necessarily what roads are bad first, what roads are good first.
I get that, but by the same token, as I think we've all said, we don't want to be part of that discussion. And maybe I just haven't been around enough to see what's planned. But based on the current road acceptance state policy, there's so many holes in it and room to move, that it feels like in the end, we're always subjected to having to look at it and go, yeah, 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 that's right, that's wrong. And I, I really would like us to be able, I feel like the engineers should be able to do that a lot more thoroughly.
To Kim's point, maybe have them come with a couple of options for us.
That's what I was going to say. I'll get that, get that direction to them.
Okay.
And that in a work session meeting, do you think?
Yeah, I was looking to ask for that.
Yeah, I was going to, see if we can have him in the 10:31 meeting. They've got, I'll call them tomorrow and see if they've got time to get stuff together before the 10:31 meeting. Because they, they probably want to research deep places and, and figure out some, you know, what they're doing. But 10:31 or 12, 11, 12.
And, you know, I know I won't be around for a lot of this discussion. I just felt like if we could at least get balls moving, it might not be a bad idea. If it's okay, I just want to review the motion I had, because I had one. I don't know if any of it's still relevant, given what you've said, but.
Fantastic question before you go.
What's that? Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. Go ahead.
No, that's, um, so what I'm understanding is that Christina, you're going to go back to AMT and have them come up with some different options on what our long-term paving schedule is going to look like. Or just our paving schedule is going to look like.
Options for y'all to make decisions to limit the amount of subjectivity.
I, I still don't, I still don't want to be going to making decisions. They still need to be that, but they, but we, but we need to be.
And do we have a guesstimate of the amount of money we have for it? Because we know what, approximately what Powell bill is bringing in, right? But then we add in the budget, so we basically hand them a pot of cash and say, okay, what's, I mean, we have 300,000, 400,000, whatever it is this year, what are we going to do? I think that's.
Yes, and if you recall some of the discussions we had in the budget retreat, we had moved from every year to every other year. And if I can remember correctly, I think it was under $80,000 a year, because we were doing 300,000.
We were pitching in 180?
Hang on one second. Let me, let me look at the Powell bill funds that were appropriated.
Originally, I thought it was, they were doing 150 and, they were doing 150, something like that.
We budgeted 160 this year. And we won't, we won't use, if, whatever we don't use, it'll go back into the fund balance as reserve.
Aren't we doing, aren't we back onto the every two years? Schedule, yeah.
To every other, yeah.
So this 160 should not, we shouldn't be spending this 160. It'll go back, it'll stay there. And then when, when the year's over, it'll carry back over and we'll have a reserve for Powell bill.
Alright.
So next year it should be more, and we will actually do something two years from now.
Okay, so.
What are you saying, Kim?
So, so you're going to have, you're going to work with AMT on that. And then you guys, staff is going to work on doing, updating the spec manual and the road acceptance policy.
We're already doing, we've already, we're already working on the spec manual. And then we will work with AMT to get the spec manual language that's in the road acceptance policy in that accordingly.
Okay, so it's still going to be one document or two?
The spec manual, wasn't that kind of off of what Waxall did? Did they, AMT said rewrite the, yeah. We were basically following what Waxall went through. And us not having to spend the money and trying to recreate the will here and just use that policy, because I thought it was an acceptable policy.
We need to add where it came from.
We did a lot of drawings and stuff for standards in the end. I know, because I was working with it on planning work with Lisa.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where it came from.
He's right. It was, it was where they first picked it up from, but just, you know, there's like a lot of amendments in it too. But from that, what was I going to say?
You keep thinking. On the road acceptance policy, I would really not like to have like years in there.
Okay.
Like, I think it, I think it ties us down too much for us to not be able to address changes that come up that, you know.
Let me work with AMT and work up with some language and see how y'all like what we've done. They, they really need to be here for this conversation, because I'm not an expert banging into this. I don't want to tell you, advise you something that I don't really know what I'm talking about.
Okay, now I know what I was going to ask. Double check, because I think, I think you guys said you updated the standards manual?
We are in the process.
You're in the process. And then it's going to come back to the council for approval? Okay, just want to make sure. I remember that being a discussion point when they did it. Does it come back to council or does it stop it to do what I wasn't there? So.
Your motion.
Yeah, and again, sorry, guys, I didn't know what would apply, because I didn't know what the conversation would be about. So it was to consider the amendments AMT engineers have proposed to this language. Are we ready to just?
AMT has not proposed any language.
Oh, they have not?
I don't think it's ready.
I was having trouble reading it, to be honest.
And, and honestly, I had taken this off in its totality until AMT was here, but you didn't want to talk about it. So I'm not ready, I'm not even ready for y'all to approve this at all.
Okay, so that's good. I'll leave that section off. I wasn't sure. And then, I wasn't sure if you were in a hurry to have that. Okay, so, and we may have covered this already, so I'm just going to read it for fun. Have the engineers draft a more comprehensive road acceptance and/or resurfacing evaluation policy, which is an aggregate of pavement condition, index, road surface life expectancy, based on factors that include technical design characteristics, traffic volumes, expected vehicular use types, roads location within a subdivision, and in relation to other roads, and the roads location in relation to other uses.
Is that your motion?
What do y'all think?
Well, I think.
Are we, that might not apply now. I don't know.
But yeah, that motion is maybe, now you're telling them exactly what you want, rather than having.
Just, it was a mesh of factors.
Right, no, I understand that with all, with all respect, but rather than having them come to us and say, because it sounds like we're not ready for this anyways.
And I need to know how much of this is driven by DOTs too, because some of that stuff sounds great, but a lot of it's going to be driven. But we're at DOT's beck and call in terms of financially. So I don't, I'd hate to tie our hands to those factors when I don't know the other factors that are involved.
Yeah, quite frankly, I hate even having a motion at this point.
And I honestly just wanted to read it to remember where I was, but I think that, you know, what Kim said, have them bring back some options. They know that, that NCDOT contract factor to me is like a gorilla in the, you know, a hundred pound gorilla in the room. You never know what that's going to end up doing to any schedule, right? Let's get.
I'll have a conversation with them and see if we can come up with a few different options. The ultimate goal is to produce the subjectivity from y'all's standpoint.
Yes.
So whatever that means with the parameters that they have to work in, give us some options.
And, yes, and allow, tell us like where they're coming up with it. Like there, it's just, they're just kind of picking it. And, and if they're picking it, because that's what DOT is coming in and telling them, then, which that may be the case, I don't know. But I think that's part of the problem is, we don't know how they're coming up with the roads.
And, and I can only tell you that I know DOT does their resurfacing scheduling in advance. So I know they look at that as a part of the project, and they know that they're going to do Firethorn in X year or Innisbrook in X year. And they take that into consideration when they're doing their proposal as well. And I don't know how much of that is done.
Well, I was going to say, just tell, just let them know that like we want a little, like some options. And then if they can be a little more clear with us of how they're coming up with them.
And would you all do me a favor, because I don't know how long I'm going to be around for this, at least consider this option? I almost think that anytime things come in front of the council for evaluation, well, let me back up and say, I think that there should be a policy, a implementation policy that has blinders on. And that may even be, mean, I think, getting road lists that do not have actual names on them. But they have numbers, for example, so that nobody knows what subdivision on the council, what they're talking about.
I'm fine with that. I don't care.
I mean, I just feel like, or that there's no sidebar discussions with engineers or whatever the case is. If you all would just kind of take that into consideration, that to truly be able to say, hey, and I know, because I was here. And people, how often have I heard, but Canterfield was done first? It's a terrible feeling to know that that had nothing to do with me, and yet have to live with that. And I'm sure it's all the way around. So whatever we can build into that policy to make it like a blind study, I think might be worth considering.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, I honestly, like, I don't care what the roads are. Like, I do not want to make that decision.
I think in the beginning, though, you're going to see the push from DOT to just say, look, we have a crew. This crew wants to knock this whole thing out regardless of the level of, and that's where they work, and then they move to the next.
And that, and that, and that may be the case, and if that's what they're telling us.
Right.
Then.
But they can do that with a score on the road. You don't need to know, oh, it's, make a promise to this person or that person, right?
The only thing that I'll caution about that is the transparency to the citizens. Everyone wants to know when their road is coming up, and, and that's the only thing that I hesitate.
Yeah, but I mean, like, I can sit there and tell them, oh, you guys are on the schedule right now in two years, but that can change.
Well, that, exactly. And I have to be honest, I'm not sure that that's great. Like, I'm trying to, you know, all present company excluded, the, the reality is, I often see it pit some subdivisions across other subdivisions. I can't stand that. When ultimately they're really just trying to do something good, something fair, something lawful, something that's measured, something objective, right? And so whatever we can do to make sure that we can assure people, I don't know. Like, when my road's getting done, Kim said it best. If it, why promise them if we, if we don't know, if it could change?
One thing that I could do, and this is just, I'm thinking off the cuff here, is you're talking about unidentified markers for, for roads. When they come and do the survey at the next meeting, I can, I can make some, some stuff up. So y'all don't see what the, the names are, and once y'all get that approved, then we can release the names. If that's how you want to do it.
That's fine, that's fine. But with the caveat is, this can still change.
Yeah.
Like, that's, that's what, like, so people don't understand that just because it's on there, just because it's slated to happen then, doesn't mean that, you know, DOT is not going to come and be like, you know, we're not doing that, we're doing this neighborhood and we're going to pay for it. Okay.
I mean, that happened with Providence Ridge, right? Like, they saw themselves on the list, on the list, on the list, on the list, and at the last minute, I was like, I don't know what happened, right?
Yep.
I can't explain it. And then you think, why do we put ourselves in this position?
Yeah, so I'll talk with them, and if we decide that the, the unidentifiable factors are the most relevant to have the conversation, then that's maybe what we'll bring. So let me work with AMT and.
Need a motion for that?
I don't.
Just direct.
No, it was more like a, a poll.
Okay. Okay.
Good?
Thank you, Christina.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Next up, we have consideration of attorneys for revision of statement of economic interest form, code of ethics, and employee statement of interest form.
You want me to take it? I'll make it real quick. We tried really, really, really hard to have this.
Can I sound some, whoopsies?
Yeah, actually, last night, I think I finalized it, the melting of all things.
I got a whole bunch of, I got a whole bunch of versions, no, a version. So I don't know which one I was supposed to be looking at while you're talking.
Okay, so one of the things I was going to say is, I, there was some discussion of bringing this forward today as it was, as we moved for it to be on the consent agenda. But to be honest, and I think they're probably, I'm sure Chaplain and Christina are in agreement, it felt way too late to put a clean version in front of you today or yesterday, right? I know if I was in your shoes, I'd be perturbed. So rather, so I would like to motion to have you allow me, Christina, and Spencer.
Chaplain.
One, oh, it's Chaplain.
You said it right.
You guys, now you have to pick me. Work together to finalize the, the latest drafts. Put them into one clean, properly formatted template or a document for the council to review at the work session. And work out two or three little tiny policy things that I would like to bounce off Chaplain. And if that's okay with all of you, then we'll bring it back to the work session meeting.
So you have a motion.
Hold on, I got a question. This is what, this is the reason I wanted to pull it off. I thought that in the I section of the SEI, so the other disclosures, I thought that we had taken off two and three.
Hold on, which we're, we're going, ESI?
Yeah, no. SEI.
Oh, SEI.
Because we took it off of the ESI. I see it was gone there, but I thought we decided to take it off of both.
Let me catch up to you.
And I may be wrong, so that's why I wanted to ask.
I know we took the.
Are you, any family member?
Nope, I'm under I, other disclosures, two and three.
Oh, no, we didn't take those out, or you all didn't take those off the SEI.
We didn't, only the ESI.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I couldn't remember.
Yes, it was only.
I'm fine having it on there, but I just wanted to make sure that, because I knew we had taken it off of one. I just thought we had taken it off of both.
No, we just threw the ESI. That said, there were duplicates in the SEI, there were a couple duplicate questions, so we were able to shrink the SEI.
Okay.
And that's a little shorter.
Perfect, I'm good, I'm good. That was my only question. I thought we had taken them off both, so I just wanted to make sure that that was done correctly.
Did you want to discuss them again, or you?
No.
So that was it.
So we are going to move that, have the director to have Mary and.
Christina and Chaplain.
Christina and Chaplain.
Yeah, I'll probably just shoot emails back and forth to ask.
So you'll have a cleaned up version for the work session for us to have any questions on. And if we can get that.
Will it prove it then?
Is that for all three?
Oh, yeah, we'll get it.
Oh, yeah.
Before the meeting, give us a chance.
I'll try to have it next week.
It's not going to take me forever to get through it.
Here it fits.
Okay. Thank you.
I sent you a calendar invite.
Yes, I saw it. I, I didn't catch it. But you, we still have the personnel policy on here, right?
Y'all already heard it. Y'all already heard it.
Oh, it was in the consent agenda, right?
It was in the consent, yeah.
I forgot to explain one thing.
Okay. Are we good? Next up, we have the minutes that we were going to review, the 29th and December 5th.
Yeah, so December 5th, only because it was first.
Can I ask, do y'all want them up on the screen, or how do you want to?
Mary, do you need your changes up on the screen?
I know which one, I think I know the only thing that.
Okay, mine are two.
One correction.
Minor, minor, so now.
Do y'all just want to just send them to me?
No, I want to tell you and approve them.
Yeah, they can approve them.
Sorry, Barbie.
No, I'm just, I just wanted to make sure what's, what's the best.
Mine is five, so. Mine is two.
All right, well, let me get to them, because if you don't want to pull them up, then I have to have you written.
Well, you can pull them up. It's easier for you.
Well, it just doesn't matter. I just don't want to waste anybody's time if, if you all.
No, 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 you can pull them up. You can write them, make them from.
You pull them all up.
We're on December 5th?
Yeah.
Going to December?
The special council meeting or the?
Hold on, let, let me get there before we start. I think that's where a lot of the confusion gets into.
Oh, it's working on the screen.
Oh, right now?
Yeah. Okay, ready? So the only one is, it says Mary Scoot, interim village administrator.
Yes.
I was not interim.
Okay.
And I was village administrator slash planner. Oh, and I did notice that in the next set of minutes, it did say that. So I guess. It did, it said administrator.
Planner, right?
Yeah, I'm planner.
Okay. All right, anything else? Is that it?
That was it.
All right, was there anything else anybody else had?
Uh, on the.
No, on the, on 12/5. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and save them.
Yep. Should we make a motion to approve them?
Y'all can do all three together as amended.
It's just two, but yeah, sure.
Sorry.
Run out of space bar, oh, I was going to say.
No, no. My numbers weren't working. Okay, and then y'all wanted to, was it the 20, was that, was that all of, for the 2017?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the other ones are ready to go?
The August 29th, 19th.
And it's written to the 29th.
Okay, uh, council members absent. Oh, it's, it's right there. It's wrong on mine.
What was wrong?
Your name's still spelled wrong. I got, I got an old copy of the minutes. They're right now.
Is, was that probably changed?
No, it's right there, but it's not right here. I'm good.
Well, that's easy.
Okay, then I have page five of five, just a small.
Can, can you give me a timestamp?
Two twenty seven.
Okay. Five of five.
Yep.
Okay.
Page five of five. In the middle, right after me giving kudos to Rohit, saying that I asked the commissioners to set aside bonds, I actually, I asked them to consider bonds for multiple towns to, not to set.
I'm sorry, to consider.
Consider bonds to build more athletic trails.
There, there you go. Right there.
Page five of five.
Oh, consider.
Consider, these have set, right before consider, there you go.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes that is amended for twelve, five, seventeen, and eight, twenty nine, nineteen.
So moved. All's in favor?
Aye. I'm sorry about that, guys. The set that I had in my binder was not.
Okay. Moving on, um. For this to go into new business, in the work before, I'm finished, a proposal meeting with.
Yeah, the CC, CD.
So, actually, I want to check our code or something.
I can tell you something in the meantime, so, um, if you're not able to come to the planning board meeting and make that a joint meeting um, with the, uh, the planning board chair, we can organize separate meetings that are not scheduled.
But it's not advertised as a joint meeting.
Later, later, much later.
And I'm gonna ask for a quick motion to allow John Jones to come in on the conversation too, since he's here and speaking. You guys are all okay with that?
I'm okay with that. Um, you guys agree with that?
Do you read a motion?
Until, until there's a motion, like, until we're debating.
I, I mean, here's the thing, I think that we need to have a meeting with them before they have, they start talking about this again. Like, I have no idea what's going on.
It's gonna be a new.
Like, I mean, I, I, I mean, I've gotten emails and I don't know what's going on, and I appreciate the fact that they want my opinion, but for me to offer my opinion, I need to have information to do so, and I don't have any yet. Now, if I needed to have been at those public input meetings, somebody should've told me that. I've never gone through a rezoning, so, um, you know, that's, that's my fault, I guess I should've asked, but I would've thought that I should've been told that, so.
Just so you know, though, it's handled differently by different people. Like, even on the planning board, for example, there would be PIM meetings ahead of time. Some planning board members, and I'm sure it's the same with councils, would prefer to remain somewhat objective and let those processes happen and stay back. Other ones would like to just kinda be in the thick of it. I don't think there's a right way and a wrong way to do it, but, I mean, Nick will know, he's been through it.
Over the, over the years, there's been times when they said, we shouldn't be at the public information meeting, we should be at the public information meeting, it's kinda like a.
Well, it sounds like the.
I, I agree with you, I got, I've gotten multiple emails and I don't know what they talk if they want my opinion, I don't even know what they're, what it's about, you know?
Yeah, and I mean, and I don't know where we are with, you know, it used to be this buffer, now it's this buffer, but we're asking for this buffer. I'm like, I, I just, I don't know where we are in the process in order to have a constructive conversation with anybody about this.
So I can say, at least from my point of view, I have performed a watchman behind, so, I've asked, you know, you know, I've downloaded the application, I'll do my reviews at home, kind of watch to see what's changed, just so that I'm abreast of things when they come to me. But I don't necessarily wanna get in the thick of things, except not even so much with Marvin Gardens, but with the, um, what was it called? Marvin Village application, that's CCDD on Ray, Rayleigh, on, what do you call it, Railroad. It was so controversial, and this one seems to be getting there, that I can tell you as a planning board member, we really, really needed at that point council to step in, or leadership to step in, and say, are we looking at something that is so beyond the scope that we should kinda stop here? Right? Or do we, like, you just, because a, a planning board can't do that, they have no legislative power. They are advisory boards, they're required to just follow the organs and go through step by step. Um, that's why it's a little unusual to me that we haven't yet, um, seen a request from them. It just could be a lack of having to ensure the heck that we had to do before. But usually, back in that situation, I was dying for a joint meeting with the council in order to get their feedback and make sure that, yeah, this is worth pursuing, or maybe we should explore this, or maybe we should explore that, so.
But it feels like that's where we are now.
That's what it feels like.
I, I can interject here. Um, in, in our ordinance for a conditional district, we have two public involvement meetings and two planning board meetings, and then it goes to council. Um, but I think.
Minimal.
Minimum, that's all, that's what I was about to get to. We're at the second planning board meeting, and I highly doubt that they will, uh, go straight to recommending whatever plan that's, that's the, to council. So they're going to want another planning board meeting, and I think that's the time.
Within the sixty days, though, right?
Right, right. In between that time, that's when you should be, uh, scheduling a joint meeting with them.
What's the sixty days?
Um, yeah, in our ordinance is that, it says that planning board has sixty days to deliberate from the time that they start deliberating.
After the second PIM.
Right, after the second planning board meeting.
Have they, have they started deliberating?
It would start from.
Right, it would start from Tuesday.
So this is where, but if I, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been, I'm a little rusty, but usually it's after a review of the very first PIM meeting, that the suggestion is, that there's a strong encouragement and suggestion that the planning board meet with the council after the first PIM meeting, not the second.
There was a whole flow chart. I remember we giving them a flow chart. I remember it was boom, 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 it was very clear where we came in.
So I'll take you back to Marvin Gardens, Joe, 'cause you were there, Nick was there too.
You're not gonna take me back to Marvin Gardens?
No, I'll take you back with me. Take you all back. So, I felt a trolley on Mr. Rogers' neighbor. So, if you guys remember, the first one was the Raleigh Miller, Rayleigh Miller development, and that was just a free-for-all, and it was crazy. So luckily, we tried to impose a lot of these things for the Marvin Gardens subdivision. And one of the things that worked well at that time, if you remember, is the planning board reviewed the PIM comments. That's what it says, it says review the PIM comments, and then the mayor and or the chair, I think, is supposed to decide and consider whether or not to hold a joint meeting with the council and the planning board. So we did that. If you remember, it was Lanny, Ross Overby, Brian Beatty, you, and who am I missing? Anyway, it was very helpful.
Ron.
Ron Salina?
No, you know what, that was just for you guys.
That was there, that was my first one.
Was it Burnham?
Maybe Christina?
Yeah, it was maybe Christina. But that was my first one.
And we had that joint, remember that? Um, as a planning board chair, I can tell you at the time, it was a huge relief compared to the other process we've gone through, to kinda hear, ask questions, and get council direction. I just wanted to help you.
I, I just remember there being a flow chart on this, and I don't know where that flow chart is or who would have that.
You remember what the name of the flow chart? 'Cause I'm looking on that.
I, there is one too, he's right, there would used to be one on the website.
Yeah, it was on the website.
Yeah.
So the sixty days starts from the first planning board meeting after the second PIM?
Yes.
So we actually brought this up at the last planning board meeting, and, uh, kinda came to a, an idea that the planning board would like to, to, uh, know themselves when the sixty days begins as opposed to starting at.
And I can tell you that. So it's the first meeting after the PIM, as long as the applicant is ready to have his review. The minute he does, the minute he puts it in front of the planning board for review, the sixty day clock begins.
Interesting. So the second planning board meeting, or the?
So it could be, so it's, it's at least, the planning board needs to be prepared that after the second PIM, it could be on that meeting. But if the applicant has decided after that second PIM, gee, I better change the parking, I better install buffers, and he wants to take more time to prepare his application, he can do that, that's up to him. But the minute that he puts that plan back in front of the planning board, the sixty day clock begins.
When they meet. So not, so not when it's submitted, but when they meet.
When they meet.
To deliberate about it. So if they decided that they didn't wanna deliberate about that next week, because they would rather have a joint meeting with us first, then that sixty days is a start.
That would be difficult, and I have to read it again, because I believe the applicant at that point is entitled to have his review. That's might be the.
Yeah, I think so too. The statutes are written, so you can't just stall everything. So it goes from the planning board to the council, and if they don't give a recommendation within the sixty days, then it goes, yes, it goes without a recommendation.
So then, does council have to make a decision at that point?
Yes, come before council for consideration.
It'll have to take for a year if they want it. I've seen it take that long, it shouldn't.
Yes, council doesn't have the time parameters. At some point, there can be some other.
And, and the reason that I'm asking is sixty days, like, we're pushing up on election, like, I don't know that, like, this board wants to be making that decision.
I've, I've seen that happen.
I mean, maybe.
Maybe you guys do, but.
I mean, I wouldn't.
The only thing is, I really don't. On the other hand, I feel like this is probably one of those last things I can maybe help with. Not in terms of decision, but in terms of.
Like, talking about it.
Process and.
Marvy, check with Lisa, I think she was the one that, she may know the name or be able to.
Well, I'm, I'm searching the V drive for a flow chart. I would think it would be rezoning flow chart.
I think I even have it. If you, if you put on action, I must ask Mary and send me an email, I'm almost positive I've got it.
I think the sixty days, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's worded in there to, something about that they have to get their packets sixty days in advance or something like that, so, is that how it is?
It's fifteen days, fifteen days.
That's a different thing, yeah, fifteen days.
Seven days for the report, fifteen days for the plat.
Okay.
I, I thought this was all, this all happened though, when we were going through Marvin Gardens. The, the, the process, that, that, we had that process in place for them by the time.
Well, here's the funny thing, we didn't have it adopted at that point. So we knew that Marvin Gardens had to be better than what we had done before. So I outlined a process for us at that point as the chair, and you guys were in agreement, and so we almost did like this pilot program, and then we codified it 'cause it worked well.
I've, I've heard of it, yeah. You haven't heard, there's one, yeah. There is one.
Okay, so this is the first rezoning that is actually going through this process officially?
It is, but it's on, it's very, very similar to the one that was before. There, the only, even back in the old, the old ordinance, it still said the mayor and the chair shall decide whether there should be a joint meeting. Uh, this one, we just tried to make it a little more clear in the process a little.
There's no clear on here.
But it's been.
I mean, I think bottom line is, we should have a joint meeting, 'cause I'd like to know what's going on.
If, 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 uh, my thought is, the minute that you see residents are this upset about something, it kinda makes me think, even as a village community, there might, might be good for us to get together.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Would've been, would've, I mean, just from my own opinion, it would've, would've been a little bit nice, I think, to have the joint meeting prior to getting all the things from the residents.
Yeah.
Now we go to a meeting, the residents are there, they're gonna be saying it's up to us, and I don't.
That's where I'm a little confused myself.
About what's going on.
Well, yeah, and before it came to us, the first, they had the first public involvement meeting before it ever came to us, right?
Right.
Yes.
So, I mean, they, they were.
They were twisted up there.
They were in the knots before it came to us the first time.
Yeah.
And, and, but.
The way the letters read is, we've already approved it, or we're about to approve it, that's all.
We tried to, tried to explain it to them at that, at that second meeting.
Right.
Let me go back, ask before I forget, you know, the, the sixty days, and without trying to sound like I made up my mind or decisions or whatever, but, you know, so, it's on the agenda for next Tuesday night. And they come in here and, Mister, um, you know, applicant, you know, you've got this pretty plan, but if that's what you're asking us to vote on tonight, I'm, you know, just, I'll say, no, now if you take this with it and come back, I'm just, just.
Oh, those are good questions.
You know, come back. Does, does the sixty day re, reset then?
Only if he substantially, make, he makes a substantial amendment to his application, does it start again.
I mean, I mean, 'cause, you know, if I say, you know, per, me personally, if you, if it's a yes or no based on what you bring me tonight, then I can't recommend, you know, I'm just trying to understand the process.
I think what Mary said is.
You know, we had this conversation this afternoon, and you said Chaplin is gonna be there Tuesday night, which may, you know, answer, answer some of those or be available for that kinda question then.
And the applicant can always slow things down, they can, the, the process is there, so it moves through to at least.
And I'm not trying to stall it.
No, no, to get to this board, yeah, but the applicant will oftentimes put the brakes on it and go, I don't wanna go with an unfavorable recommendation. Uh, other times are like, just get me to council and I'm gonna roll the dice. Uh, and it just depends on the applicant.
And, and my feeling of that second meeting, I thought he made major improvements from what I saw the very first time, and it didn't seem to impress the, the residents, 'cause they basically just don't want anything there other than what's there now.
That's not how to call it. You know, here, I, again, I remember wrestling with that question.
Trying to predispose anything.
If he's not gonna flip it around, maybe he's not going to be able to, um, you know, more often than not, I see applicants go, yeah, they're an advisory board, let me get through the sixty days. So you're probably, this is at least what I found, two, three major ones I've done. You're probably going to have to kinda take the mindset that what's in front of me is, is what I have to deliberate on for sixty days, and begin making lists of conditions that you would recommend to rectify what you see. So if, for example, you say, find a way to reduce the number of parking lots or parking spaces, that would just be a planning board recommendation. There are a lot of different ways to do it, but you could say, look, we would recommend approval, you know.
If.
If, right, if these conditions are met, um, and that could, it could be something, I believe it's probably an easy.
And back to the, the joint meeting, I, I think that the residents thought there were gonna be a, a, a public involvement.
I don't know why they thought that. Sorry, 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 residents.
Well, the, the notice said they might be, you know, planning board might be there, council might be there, didn't say when you were gonna be there. But personally, I don't think there would've been anything for you to gain.
I, I still wouldn't have been able to answer any questions for them.
You know, and, and they would've expected you to walk out, or for them to walk out with a decision then.
Yeah.
And if you, that was not what was gonna be.
I think it makes sense, though, does not on this flow chart, if it doesn't already have it, and I can't remember how it flows, but after that sixty day starts, then we would want to probably sit down with the planning board as a council in a separate joint meeting and say, okay, what do you got? What, what are your concerns and stuff, and, and specifically, whether that's at a work session meeting for us, or whatever, so we can get a, you know, a little more.
It's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be a special meeting.
Yeah, there's, and I think, you know, I might be clear, I think you're right, but it's almost like there's two separate meetings we're talking about. One is something that you, you do for the planning board to help provide them with the legislative guidance, right? And then the other one is, okay, now that you guys have your recommendation, give us a full-on report about why you're recommending this and your.
So there really should be two.
Ideally.
Yeah, and I don't think, you know, this coming Tuesday night is the time for it.
No. Well, I mean, I'm not gonna be there, so you're not gonna be there.
You can be supplied with some information, you know, more than you've got now, maybe, or whatever.
So, on the, on the agenda, not that it's here, I haven't written your agenda yet for that, but you probably should have. So is that first up on the agenda?
It is. It's gonna be first, especially because, um, I wanted Chaplin to come in, so.
Okay. I'm gonna try and make it, I, I wrote it down, so I will try and make it.
Wear a hat, I'm not.
I know.
Um, can we, can we, can we, can Christina and Rohit, can you get with us members and you members and try to, let's get a special, I don't know, let's just, whatever you said, let's get a special meeting on the books?
A doodle pool.
A what?
A doodle, that's how you set up meetings now. You, they give you a, they send you out a doodle pool when you say, this day works for me, and they look at what.
I don't know what a doodle.
I just learned of it because of CRTPO, that's how they make all of their.
Okay, so yeah, can you guys like, and give us some things to do a special meeting, and plans start, it's gonna have to be at night, 'cause a lot of people work.
And, and, and even if we can't get everybody there, whoever we can get is.
Yeah.
We need, we need to do it, I think.
I, I do too, I really need to know what's going on.
Yeah, and, and if, if anyone wants, I think I've said this to you, if anyone wants to meet ahead of time, I've gone through what's available. Has he provided a more thorough packet yet?
Yeah, he just did, for the next planning board meeting.
Oh, he just did? Like, like this, yesterday, or?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, 'cause I haven't seen, I've been waiting for the rest of it.
Right, today, really. But it's gonna be in the next planning board's package.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more than happy to take appointments to fill you in individually if you wanna come by.
Well, see, I need to make an appointment with you before I've gone through it, 'cause usually it's after I go through it, they'll come through. But I already have some suggestions that I think could help, I just don't, didn't know what else was coming. He didn't list what deviations he was requesting at the last, up until now, so.
Right, right, they do have a deviations list in their current submission, so I can send that to you, call, any email.
Part of me is a little bit amused, because comparatively, this is a pretty small, right? It's a pretty small application.
It's not a big parcel planned, there can't be that much stuff.
Or you can't do much.
Right, it's pretty cramped.
Well, I know, but I mean, the emails were like, there's a third parcel that, now they were thinking that they can combine it, and they're gonna put a fifty thousand square foot something up there, and I'm like, wait, what's going on?
That's not the plans submitted, so that's not before, that's all speculation.
Well, and that, but that's in the emails that we're forgetting, and so I'm like, wait, what's going on?
And that's where I think, maybe, maybe I can help, I'm not sure. But if, if we're listening to what the problems are in the planning board, that's when the condition list comes out, and if they're, for example, afraid that a fifty thousand square foot building is about to be turned into, I don't know, supermax or whatever, right? You can propose solutions through your list of development standards that would say, "Look, it will not be this, this, and this." So, it might be a matter of hearing what the issues are, and how do you come back with the solutions.
There's a whole, there's a whole bunch of issues in that email. I just don't know what's, but I just don't know what's right or not, like, I don't know, like, where we are.
I also don't think they were listening at the last meeting, I know, because.
Have you gotten those emails?
No.
I gave it, someone hand-delivered that email today.
Oh, I haven't read it.
I gave it.
The one today?
Yeah.
And I didn't read it yet.
Okay, is it the one that I forwarded to you? Okay, well, what, never mind, never mind, okay.
But here's the other thing, knowing the ordinance is also half the battle, because I gotta tell you, and you guys, you know, you've heard me say this, Nick, when we had developments before, we had no landscape buffer, no parking standards, no road standards, no use standards, no site development standards. Right now, when I look at this and I think, oh, that's covered by the code, oh, that's covered by the code, maybe they just need reassurance of what it is that's already built into the code.
Like I said, they're not listening, you know, they're mouthing here before engaging.
Okay. Can I throw something out real quick? I know this is all a little off-topic. Have you looked at shared parking provisions?
Uh, not for this site.
Just to put a bookmark on that, I think that there's a way to reduce the number of parking spots in the interior surface of shared parking, just a thought. I saw it in an email. Um, so, you guys are gonna poll us and let us know?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. All right, next up, we have discussion of consideration, is that on new business now?
Yes.
We are on the new business. Discussion, consideration of closed session policy.
Wait, is this the one that got resigned?
Close session minutes.
Yeah, and that was just so you could see that there's, there may be.
It's just the policy, right?
It's just the policy. And here's the, um, here's the attorney red lawn version.
I have a bunch of questions, so. I don't know if this is, goes into the policy, or if this is, needs to be somewhere else.
Well, to, to give you some background, we don't actually, we, we had a, an old policy for closed session minutes, but there's, there's nothing that actually gives us some parameters as to what to do for, for unsealing them, what's, how, how the attorney gets, gets involved and things like that. So, this is a policy that with, with Chaplain's help, we, we kind of just put it down to, to follow the procedures for closed session minutes.
Who's blue and who's red?
Uh, the, the blue is the recommendations, and the red is the strikes.
Okay.
Those are the deletions.
Okay, so, can I go first?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Nick, you good? Can I go first? So, should we have in here, like, when the closed session meeting minutes should be transcribed and to us for approval? Or is this the wrong policy for that?
No, that is it.
Yeah, it should be in there.
You approve them during the, during closed session, because you can't really.
Because they're sealed.
No, I know, I got that, but like, a timeframe, like, it needs to be done within a month, two months, a year, three years.
And that's what this policy is supposed to establish, so if you want to. Well, if you want to set a timeframe, then you set a timeframe, because.
So, it's, so the timeframe's not in here yet?
This is, this is just a rough policy, there's no timeframe right now.
I think we need to put that in there, because I know that, I think I've only approved two or three sets of closed session minutes, and I know I've been in a lot more in the past almost two years.
And I tell, and I can tell you, as a staff member that's come on, on occasion, you kept, you go and you look at closed session minutes, and they're like, unapproved for years sometimes, and the people that were there don't.
Aren't there anymore, right.
And then some get lost.
Some get old and forget.
And that's, that's where we've come up against, because that's why we need to put something.
Okay, so my first question is, when are closed session minutes to be completed? Meaning, when are they to be transcribed and to us to approve?
They should follow your normal meeting schedule with your other minutes.
So, so within, so within a month of the closed session?
Can I just recommend we do it by the next scheduled closed session? Because then we're gonna be going into closed session upon closed session, just a few minutes.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, that's totally fine, but again, we, I think we need to have something, because again, I know from eighteen and nineteen, I haven't seen any.
How about this, how about this, go to the next closed session not to exceed three months, because we can go three months without a meeting.
Without a meeting, yeah, but, but the goal is to have these done while they're fresh in the slides.
That's my point.
And, and these just have to be general accounts, they're probably not gonna be.
So, what is, if we're doing, if we're doing minutes in work sessions, why do we not go into closed session during the work session and just approve them?
You can do that, you can do that.
I think we should just.
But, but, but we need to, I think it needs to be written in a policy, so that we, so that we do that.
Every work session, I think.
That's a good idea.
Have a place spot.
Just have a place spot for closed session to approve closed session minutes.
Okay, so paragraph one, where it says, "They shall approve in closed session minutes," in closed session to prevent disclosure, right before that, "Upon approval," we could put a time parameter, these should be.
Like, six months max?
No.
I'm in paragraph, paragraph number one, after the first full sentence, right before the words, "Upon approval." Because y'all wanted a timeline, because they're just going, this is how you approve them, and then we're gonna say when you approve them.
Right. So, three months, you're thinking?
No, like, every month.
Really?
Yeah.
We don't have that many closed sessions, do we?
We're gonna set it right there.
Okay, then do it every three months?
Well, we're saying not to exceed three months, but we're gonna say, have it done at the next closed session meeting, not to exceed three months.
Okay, that's fine.
So, it's fairly fresh.
I'm just saying, like, again, I haven't seen a lot, I mean, I've seen, like, two or three sets, and.
And usually really bad.
And they were before me.
Um, we're gonna say closed session minutes should be approved at the next.
I'll let you run.
Um, closed session minutes should be approved, but then we're gonna get your other, should be.
Should be approved at the next closed session meeting, not, not to exceed three months, and, and then there'd be.
Okay, wait, but we need to define the closed session, the next.
Let me, can I hold for a sec? The only problem I have, that, I actually think I like what him's saying, sort of, or only because, how often do we have to add a closed session at the last minute if the minutes aren't done? You know what I mean? Like.
Have a placeholder for that.
Well, that's what I, that's what I said, and everyone's like, no, not, don't have it every month.
But that placeholder doesn't have to be every month, but still, it could be, just to be sure.
It could be, and then if we don't need it, we don't go into it.
Only because I worry about saying the closed session, because we, we put closed sessions on, and, and who, I don't know how long it's gonna take for her to gather things, and it's not, you know.
Yeah.
Not fair in a way.
But this is if the work session is that what you're suggesting.
That's what Kim said. Because we're going over minutes of the work session anyway, so why don't we just have a placeholder for closed session?
That's fair.
Yeah.
Closed session to discuss, to review and, and approve.
It can be fifteen years.
It can't be longer than, you know.
This should be short, and I'll try to just, so, we would add, closed session minutes should, should be approved at the next closed session meeting, not to exceed three months.
Okay, and we will have.
From the closed session.
At the next work session.
You want the next work session?
At the next work session.
So, the local village hall, right, it's on there every meeting, right? You want the opportunity to say, okay, everyone shut down for fifty minutes, we're reading, we're checking, okay, good luck.
So, also, do we have a, um, do we have a process where normally it's Barbie, but if Barbie's not allowed to be in the closed session, then it goes to Christina? If Christina and Barbie are not allowed, then it becomes one of the council?
It's you, Jim.
It writes them, I mean, it doesn't matter, I mean, we just.
Or, or you should have your attorney present for that.
You just have to write a lot of them, and they're terrible to write, because usually if you're in closed session, then it's, they're not fun to write, so they would all point to me, make me write them.
Perfect, Chaplain will do it.
Well, I will say, or designated, because sometimes.
They keep it real short.
Yeah, yeah, that's perfect.
So, the fourth should be a designated council member. We used to have Anthony do them all the time.
Um, okay, does that, I mean, does that make sense? Like, I just feel like we haven't seen them, and I feel like if we're working on a policy, we need to have in there when they need to be completed and approved by us, not necessarily unsealed, but completed and approved.
Oh, no, they're, I mean, some of them will, especially some of your personnel, I mean, they're never gonna.
They'll stay sealed for.
So, did I make a motion that we amend the rules of procedure to make sure that closed session meeting minute approval is a regular agenda item?
So, you want to amend the rules of procedure, that section of it?
Yeah, I think it's eleven, rule eleven?
And then my other, my other question is, I know that, like, they get unsealed when they don't frustrate the, whatever the terms are, public.
That is statutory.
Which is fine, but when do we, like, how often are we, like, reviewing them to see if they are not frustrating anybody?
The attorney gives us advice and says, okay, this is.
It's between the attorney and the clerk, and then we'll bring them to you.
But how often are you guys sitting down, and is that in there?
It used to be annual, I don't see it anymore, but it used to be.
That is, that is what the practice was, at the last time, it was like, end of the year.
Okay, so can we, can we put that in there, that it's, you know, at the end of the year that you guys go through?
But think about, is January a bad time for you, is, like, what's February? Because I know we always try to stay away from the December when you have oftentimes a changeover.
It'd be great if we just put annually and not lock it into a month.
Yeah, well, yeah, and let us determine what, what day that, that is.
Okay, instead of periodically review?
You probably need to do an internal policy again.
Well, the thing about it is, I'm, I'm more accustomed to doing a periodic review, which is me, which means the attorney and the clerk are always doing.
Always kind of doing.
We're always doing that. So, initially, you would see closed session minutes about the same time that you would see your regular minutes. Um, the only, the only problem is, is that, you know, the personnel ones will have to stay sealed, but at that point, you would determine what, and with the attorney, you will determine which ones can be unsealed.
Does it not say in here annual anymore? Is it gone?
Well, this is a, this is a new one, so.
Oh, it's brand new?
So, yeah.
I mean, I, I mean, what if you guys did it, like, twice a year? I feel like if you periodically, then it's gonna, you know, it's like, oh, have you guys done it? No, oh, no, we're gonna get to it, we don't know, I mean, I just feel like we need.
That's what I see happen all the time.
Something like.
Not for anyone's fault, it's just that.
No, it just gets pushed off, and it doesn't get reviewed, and.
My fear is that it's kind of like the out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Unless we, I'd have to put it on my calendar to make sure that we do that on a, on a year basis, and then you all have, and that's gonna be a load of them, depending on how many closed sessions you have.
Which again, which is fine, because again, I think I've only seen, like, three sets.
Lineup spends.
Or, or was it one? Whatever, whatever it was that one time, and that was from, like, four years ago, and.
Well, those are, those are the ones, yes, yes. And those are the ones that, that went to the attorney and, and were transcribed years ago.
Right, so my point is, I feel like we need to have a timeframe, that you guys are reviewing it, and then bringing it back to us if it's time to unseal them, and if it's not, then that's fine, but we, I mean, I hope you got it in there.
Why don't we just, why don't we just do annually on February?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, because Christina came up with wording in your policy, ethics policy or personnel policy, where we kind of said we wanted to redistribute conflict of interest forms every year, but you left yourself administrative room, can't we just do that? It was kind of like a directive, but it was like, well, it gives them just enough flexibility.
Or otherwise being appropriated by the administrator.
There.
Okay, well, just put in annually then, and, and it doesn't, but I just want to make sure it's getting done, because again.
I think annually, um, sponsored, annually reviewed, and then we will head it, instead of, instead of periodically, annually.
Just do it annually.
Okay. And, and right now, y'all are talking about approval, and that is a big point. Right now, it is, y'all can take this back, it's written, it's a, a legal determination, but there's another provision where y'all can do it as well.
Did the, you guys saw that in the back?
That's, uh, paragraph five. Because there may be times that y'all want to unseal them, even if legally they could remain sealed.
Why would we do that, though?
Um.
If, if legally you're suggesting something should stay sealed?
Yep, it would be kind of like a waiver of attorney-client privilege, it'd be waiver of some type of information. It would not be a personnel matter, or certain matters that shall remain closed, it would be one of those, I still think it should remain sealed, but y'all were like, ah, we're ready to disclose it, and I don't think it meets, it just gives you, it gives y'all an override.
And that's fair, I think, though, that you probably need to put some, that's my opinion, is that you would have to say something like that in, be more specific, in that you can waive a client, you know, attorney-client privilege and release them, like, do you know what I'm saying? That, that should be.
Yeah, well, um.
If that's what's happening.
But it'd be anything, so I just wanted to add, unless y'all want to review and unseal them, but, which is fine, but I was, I was gonna do it. Yeah, but then say, y'all can override, and I think that's why that, paragraph five is important, though, yeah.
Okay.
Because most of the time, the, the other towns I've been involved in.
Just simple majority vote?
Yeah, it would be just like any other vote, unless y'all have it otherwise.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, so we added the sentence, oh, you're still gonna have one, I'm sorry.
No, I'm saying, no, I don't have anything. I'm good.
So, we added the sentence in paragraph one that we're gonna, uh, this should be approved at the next work session, uh, and not to exceed three months, because you can have one that doesn't happen.
Yeah, we're not gonna have a work session in November or December, so.
Right, and change periodically review to the annual review.
Yep.
So, we've got time parameters more than.
Perfect.
And so, I put that, I think.
Or you can say annually, or at the discretion of clerk, administrator, attorney, whoever you want to put in there. Because I don't want it to be like, oh, we can only look at them once a year.
I think that periodically review, um, on at least an annual basis.
Perfect.
Um, I think I put that a motion on the table, though, right? It was just a small one, but to amend the rules of procedure.
Oh, sorry.
Just saying, if you really want to install it.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'm gonna take action. Okay, you want me to say it again?
Oh.
Uh, you want me to say it again?
Yeah, because I already know what it was.
Okay, motion to amend rules of procedure, rule eleven, I believe, to ensure work session items, work session agenda items are, regular items are amended to include a closed session to approve, closed session minutes.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion passes. Um, all right, so we're good there?
Also the policy, I was right in that question?
No, we gotta do the policy now.
Oh, okay. Um, can I just reference?
Because y'all agreed on the amendment.
Sure, okay, so, motion to approve policy two zero one nine dash one zero dash zero one, with the recommendations, suggestions, and additions made by the council during the October eighth meeting, and as presented.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, okay. We're gonna have to, public records, discussion, consideration of public records request policy, Barbie?
Okay. Um, I developed a policy based on our extended, or the, the number of public records, uh, public, um, records requests that we received this past year, and wanted to make sure that we had a efficient way in handling those. So, this is a brand-new policy, um, and I updated the, um, what was current for our public records application and instructions to mimic what was recommended in the policy, along with a, um, flowchart as to how that will all work.
This is really just merely an internal process for us to be able to manage our flow of public records requests.
Okay, I got a question. Should there be something in there, um, about staff and council's response time for public records requests?
There is, um, if you'll look in the.
Reasonable time.
Yeah, there should be something in there that, that covers that, was it covered also in the instructions?
Tell me, show me where.
That's the general statute.
It's the general statute.
Oh, yeah, so you don't have, like, you didn't outline an exact time.
Just reasonable.
Um.
You don't, you don't know what a.
Like, like, people have not, like, just, they've just ignored a public records request, like, they're just not responding to them, on council.
That is not as promptly as possible.
Okay, so what are the ramifications behind that? What happens when that doesn't happen?
The requestee can sue.
Yeah, and then it.
Consume the village or consume the person, because to me that seems like.
Both.
Yes.
Because to me that seems like the village doesn't need to cover the person that's not responding.
Well, and, and.
Whether it's staff and/or council.
And to answer your question, uh, Councilwoman Vanderburke, um, you'll need to, as a council, establish that as prompt as possible.
That's what I'm asking.
And, and, well, if, if you want us to turn it around in fourteen days, then we can change the policy to include that.
I'm not necessarily talking about what staff is doing, like, like, what you're, like, if you're gathering up emails or, like, stuff that, like, that the village is going to have, like, I get that, but if it's something that I am being asked for and I am just ignoring your emails and I am not responding to you, what is the process, like, what?
My process for that is, I rely on the statute and I go to the administrator and, and.
So then Christina sends me an nasty gram and she says, get it in, and I just continue to ignore her, then what happens?
But based on what the flow chart is, that's, the flow chart indicates what, um, what level I go through.
Which flow chart?
The flow chart, which, I apologize, it's kind of dark, but it's this flow chart right here.
So would I be custodian?
No, if you have the record, you're the.
Yeah, you're the custodian, whoever has the record is the custodian.
Yeah, not statutorily, though.
Well, you're the custodian.
Yeah, I mean, I am, because I'm.
If it's your private.
If it's your private, but you're the, you're custodian of your private, uh, records. I'm the custodian of the village records.
Right, okay, so I would, so if I say no.
I can't find, am I with a filter?
Here, do you want it?
If I say no, no, and no, like, do you guys understand what I'm saying? Like, I feel like we need something in there that says, like, that we need to be held, like, we as council and you as.
You are statutorily, you are held to that, and that's where the administrator comes in.
But the statute is vague, so the statute only says within a reasonable amount of time, and I don't mind, I'll, you know, because Christina talked to me and I was like, well, that was what was established as precedent, right? So if it wasn't long ago where the council met and there was an extensive, uh, public records request, and the council met and they determined what the reasonable amount of time was, and at that time they determined that eight months was sufficient.
Yep.
And so, to me, that precedent of eight months was like, okay, I promise I'll get everything to you in eight months, especially when you're going back to two thousand and nine for your request. So I don't, I'm, now I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying that once you've turned it over and you've made a determination about what's reasonable, and that's what all the statute says, that's kind of the precedent.
But who said that eight months was reasonable?
Yeah, that, that's gonna be.
That was a council meeting decision.
Well, it's because I think of the amount of information that's been. It's gonna be a legal determination by court of law.
Going back to, like, two thousand and eight, they want records from, so, you know, that takes a while.
Uh, I do not recommend putting a timeframe on it, because you're gonna have requests going back.
Okay, okay, hold on, let me ask a question, I don't mean to interrupt you, but Mary, have you at least responded to somebody and said, I'm working on this?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my point, is if people are just ignoring you, like, something, like, we have got to be held accountable, this, I mean, this is, I mean, public records requirement, it's a big deal, like, so if we're just ignoring it, that's a problem.
Yes, but the only thing I can do is go by what the statute.
Okay, so then you tell Christina, Christina sends a nasty gram, and then they tell the quester, the person's not responding, and then the quester sues the village and the council person?
Yes, and the council person, if it's a council person, individual, staff member that has, um, emails on their private account that they're not supposed to, but more likely they're not at the council member with private email, uh, or, or documents, if they don't comply, uh, they may sue, statute provides that the person causing the lack of response from the public body can be held personally liable.
So the village does not have to then defend them?
Can I say this in between there, I'm sorry, go ahead and.
No, uh, but, the, the town needs to do everything to try to comply, to encourage responses, facilitate responses, because the town's gonna be involved and it's the town.
And then if there's no financial ask on the lawsuit, then, then we are taking that on, right? That's our insurance.
Yeah, but when we talk about the town doing everything, if you guys don't mind, because I have that made on the inside of this on occasion, there really hasn't been, since they've upgraded to the new Microsoft three sixty-five system, I did not, first of all, I tried to figure, it, it's complex, it's incredibly powerful, you need to almost make it a full-time job for a year to figure out everything that it can do, and what I'm thinking, tell me if I'm wrong, Barbie, I'm sure you're trying, but I don't think that the village right now is necessarily doing everything that it can do technologically, whether it's by maintaining consistent staff, whether it's making sure that everyone is getting the training they need, whether it's making sure that, you know, everybody's records are regularly updated, downloaded, like, there should be a regular archival, archiving routine, so that all of the village accounts that are out there, and we used to do this, the clerk would say, hey, this weekend, I'm coming in, right? And she'd go in, she'd download and archive everything, and all of those village emails would be put aside so that when there is a request, she can go ahead and fill it. Right now, or at least what I've seen in the last few years, they've kind of just let, let everybody manage their own records, which makes it very difficult for, I think, the clerk to go through later, I know, I don't know, that's, that's the impression I've gotten.
We still have access to everyone's email, we can get in there, they're, they're village emails, so we, we have done that with folks that have not complied, we went into their emails and pulled stuff as well.
I think I've even told you with mine to go ahead and take one.
It has to go through legal, too, to make sure that nothing.
Yeah, if there are questions, yes, then it will, they will come.
But from a personal standpoint.
I mean, there are a lot of things that are, like, it's a public document.
Yeah, exactly.
No questions.
Like, I find that, don't get me wrong, I, I don't, our chaplain, I want to give you as much work as I, as we can, of course, but I feel like a lot of times in the last record, they, you know, we, they were paying for the attorney to go through every single document, it felt like, public records are pretty straightforward, if it's not personnel, it gets released, right, or a lawsuit.
There's a lot of.
Some of it is confidential, there's some of it is confidential, that we have to be careful and, and look, because the, the statutes mandate what is held as a confidential record and what cannot be released, and what, what is an actual public record.
It goes beyond just personnel.
But do you, do you find that you have to.
Here's all the exemptions.
What's that?
This is all the exemptions up here.
Yeah.
No, I know, I, I've read through them, but do you, does, do you find that when you look at a packet, that you have to, like, go through every single document that's been provided? I don't know, maybe you do.
Yeah, it's provided, yes, because I'm the lawyer, and if something goes wrong, they're gonna, yeah.
All right, then I'm being Che Cavalier.
For, for the most part, though, when I've gotten involved with things, and I, I don't know lately that we haven't had any, but I've personally had some come in and I've tried to review everything, where I had questions, I would ask, but I, you know, look at this public records law and I try to go through and, and do things, I, I don't know, um, I mean, like, I don't know.
Like, some of them we don't have, like, and there's police, you know, if you have a police department and records that are, you know, I mean, a lot of those things don't even apply to a municipality that's small.
Yeah, I mean, there's economic development, there's criminal investigation.
Healthcare facilities, right, I mean, we don't have any of that.
No, but there's some, there's some, there's, there's some things in there that are a little iffy. Trial preparation records, nine-one-one database, emergency response plans, sensitive public security information, social securities, personal identifying information.
That one's a, a fine term.
And it's very in-depth, like, what, what exactly is a personal identifying information?
Okay, I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm fine with your policy, I was just wondering, like, kind of, what our.
What's the recourse for the person who's being stonewalled?
Yeah, and if they, if they do sue, they'll sue the town and whoever they're thinking, they're gonna, they're gonna sue everybody.
I just wonder.
But that would, but there can be personal, uh, responsibility and liability if you're the one.
So, so, so are, the umbrella of insurance that you have under, as a, as an elected official, it potentially be removed because you're not, you're not.
Right, because it's a private, it would be private.
Okay.
They'll try to get them, too, but, yeah, they're, they may say, uh-uh, we're not, that is not covered.
I think it's the neglect of duty in essence.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so make a motion for this.
Yeah, so you want to amend anything in here, like, do you want to try to define reasonable, or is that?
No, I just, I mean, I, I, listen, as long as people are responding and communicating, then I'm fine with that, it's, it's the not responding and not communicating that I think is not acceptable. Okay.
Okay.
Good, good? All right, so.
Thank you, do you want this file?
You can, you can keep it, it's all covered.
Yeah, the cover's nice.
So you make a motion to, to approve the public records request policy P dash two zero one nine dash zero nine dash zero one for adoption?
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, um, next up we have discussion consideration of government's more messages to constituents, or the two thousand nineteen referendum.
I don't, um.
Christina kept, I don't know what, she gave them all to me.
Okay.
You got a chance.
Okay. Um, okay, so I wanted this, I wanted to put this on here because since we, since we, one, I wanted to see what it looked like for the referendum, but two, since we all discussed it and we all were in a unanimous agreement that we wanted to add an additional council person, my thought is we should put something out there to the public that, hey, we all support this, we all think this is a good idea, we all want you to vote yes for this. So what do you guys think about that?
I'm okay with that.
I mean, I feel like it was unanimous, we all agreed, so, I mean, I don't want somebody reading that being like, oh, I don't even know what that means, so I'm gonna say no because I don't want it to change, so.
And I think added with why, we think it's important.
Yeah.
Right, we all talked about transparency, having more representation, all that thing.
Yep.
Yeah, I had a feel, I was actually worried it might get a little lost.
Yeah, yeah, me too, that's why, because, like, I've, you know, you see stuff about bonds up in Charlotte and.
Christina did.
We, didn't we approve this, though, right?
No.
Oh, we didn't?
So, so this is just, it's not saying they're still gonna do it, councils could do it, it's just, are you in favor of it?
Correct.
Council could still debate and say, you know what, this doesn't, right?
Uh, no, the poll on the petition says that it's, that the adoption of the ordinance is dependent upon this passing.
But you still have the option to amend your charter based on cancel action, so you could still do it, but that's not the action.
Councils could still come in and say, you know what, even though the, the community says, yeah, we're okay with adding another one, for whatever reason they come up with, they can still say.
You need to, like, rescind the chap, rescind the, the charter?
I'm just asking.
So there's, there's, there's different ways you can amend your charter per statute, you could decide today that you want to amend it based on what y'all decided, not what the public decides. So y'all could decide today that you want to have five more council members, we'll go through the process and, and change it, but we don't have to have the vote of the people at all, we could do that today.
Yes.
But what y'all decided with this last ordinance that y'all approved, was that you would refer on what the results of the referendum were?
Right.
So you can, that's what the intent of the referendum is, but that doesn't exclude cancel from five months from now saying, we're gonna do it anyway.
Right, or not do it, even if, if they, if they vote yes, they vote yes, the community votes yes, it still doesn't, does it hold them liable to add another one?
No, well, okay, hold on.
Because you gotta go.
You would have to rescind the, the ordinance, though, because we, we passed that ordinance, right, and the clause in there says effective upon the results of the petition, so you would have to, only for that, if you wanted to stop it, I'm not talking about going forward, but if you wanted to stop this from happening and everyone, and the public supported it, you'd have to rescind the ordinance you started, and I don't know if you could do that, but.
Yeah, and I haven't looked at that ordinance, I thought, because that was.
Melanie did it.
Yes, I didn't, I wasn't involved, I just kind of, um, remember it getting passed, I thought the intent was to send it to a referendum.
It was, yes, and that's what they would send.
But it's for, but it's a referendum for recommendation, not for the public to decide.
No, it is for the public to decide, the referendum, the ordinance was to, to have the charter be changed based on the results of the referendum, right?
Okay.
Correct.
So, I'm, I'm looking for, so if the public says no, we can't say yes?
We can, we can always still change it.
But if the public says yes, we can say no. Well, you'd have to go through the process.
Yeah, it's the whole process.
Including the public hearing, that you, you have to do a.
And subject to petition, because they can petition.
But, but if the public says yes, they want five council members, we can say no. I don't know, I doubt it, and I haven't, I've not reviewed the ordinance, but my, I think is if they say yes, the way you pass the ordinance, it's done.
You have to pass it, you have to pass.
Because that would be, that's a referendum, yes.
That's what I remembered it.
That's what, that's what, again, that's what we want, so.
But to your point, the referendum is, look, we want you to decide, once they decide.
You need to decide, and if they decide it's done, it's the way, without me looking at it, it's usually a referendum.
Exactly, it is, it's a referendum by the people.
So you might, just, just as a quick, aside, and I don't know if we go, if the public says yes, this election is, is only gonna have four council people.
It will be the following, it will be the twenty twenty-one election.
It wouldn't be effective, it wouldn't be effective without, in other words, council couldn't appoint somebody to be.
Correct.
To fill that fifth spot.
Right, right, so two thousand twenty-one, the question comes in is, how do you stagger the terms, because you're gonna have, um, basically you have two councilmen and a mayor running every, every, um, election term, and that, those four councilmen are staggering two and two, so if you're bringing in another council, how do you stagger that? That was always my question, my concern, if we.
And you'll have to look at that and change your, your procedures based on that.
Because then.
That's usually in the charter, though.
It's still gonna be over four years, so you're still gonna have three people.
Okay, I, I think.
But you're either gonna have two rotating off or three rotating off and two coming back on, so basically you're.
The next election would have three coming on.
Right, right, so the new election, you'll have three members coming on, and you have, and you'll have.
Always.
And the mayor, so you have three councilmen plus the mayor, and then you might have two rotating off.
That was what my biggest concern going through five, what, no, let me, hear me out, going through five is because every two years you can change it, because you run as a party of three, and then if those three councilmen get in, they're in there for four years, and you, you can't change this, whereas.
No, the mayor's, every two years, still.
I know, but the mayor's only one vote, it, it gives the three council, if they're I know, but the mayor's only one vote, it, it gives the three council, if they're in there, they're gonna be in there, say they run together, the three council, they're in there for the next four years, so you really can't change it. You really can change it if there's a two-two split, that you can change it every two years with the mayor and stuff, so.
But it would end up that the mayor will be going off at the rotation of the other two members, so you, so you always have three members switching.
Right.
But, but the people elect the mayor.
But the long-term plan was to, right, tell me if I'm wrong, right? Can we talk about incrementally then increasing another council person? So we just thought, instead of just putting two on there and having to figure out how to alternate, you get one going and then hopefully you get the second one.
Yes.
And it'll be back to normal again. That's the hope.
I would just, are you?
I'm on the record.
And it's, she's gonna be, she'll have to try that.
Like, what are you worried about at door? Okay, so can you guys put something out?
Yes.
Like numerous.
That's what we, I want, we wanted to find out.
Times and places and, you know, next door and on the village website and.
I'll get a blurb and we'll put the actual ballot out so they can see it.
Are you gonna send us to read it first, or?
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
Unless, we can all individually.
Sign?
Email back and say whatever your thoughts are. Cause, cause I mean, really, this needs to go out, like, now, cause early voting has started.
Well, we just got it yesterday.
No, no, I know, and we haven't talked about it yet, so I'm just saying, like, people are gonna start.
Well, it's an uptime.
But I did, but I did send out a notice for the, the deadline.
That was good, thank you, Barbie, that was good.
So, I was gonna open up the charter ordinance, I don't need to do that, right?
It's upon approval.
It's upon approval.
You checked, okay.
That was it, thank you, guys.
Thank you, next up, pretend I have a review of action items.
Okay. I have, um, research traffic calming devices to discuss in the roads acceptance, uh, get the total parcel numbers for the work session, um, of the survey results, if the survey results are back, and confirm the alternate position for C C cog board of delegates and contact who that alternate is.
Yeah.
They give you dinner.
Oh.
It's a nice dinner, too.
Research certificate of events, and are we researching that or are we just looking?
No, and I need to clarify another, just keep going.
Okay, um, and then ask A M T to present options for long-term road plan, was that right?
Yeah, I think, yeah, Christina, you could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that good? Okay, staff will work on a spec manual and roads plan and ask.
You will? Oh, staff, I'm sorry.
Yeah, staff, um.
Not staff, Mary.
Ask Mary to, um, get the rezoning flow chart.
Yeah.
And then check with Lisa where it is, and then schedule a special meeting for a joint meeting with planning board and council.
Yes, okay, I've got two points of clarification, that's okay. Um, the traffic calming device was not researched, it was just an earmark, so I'm not gonna research any traffic calming.
No, it was just like, I don't know what you guys do with your, your action item list, like, do you kind of keep them running? Just to have it on there.
But you had mentioned to talk about it in some of the roads discussions, so I'll have that as an earmark to maybe add a blurb in there.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's on your radar.
Yeah, on the radar, well, we'll put it on an upcoming agenda to add it in. Um, and then also the S E I meeting with Chaplain and, uh, to take place next week.
Next week.
And I'm in Raleigh most of next week, so maybe Monday or Friday, but we'll talk.
Okay.
Okay. All right, good. Count comments, anyone want to offer to go?
I'm good.
I'm good, good meeting, thank you and all the hard work.
Good meeting, thank you, staff.
I have a few.
Of course you do.
I'm the one, I have to be somewhere.
I know, chop, chop, let's go.
Okay, first, um, thank you, staff, for all of your hard work in the place, cause I know you guys are always, um, being able to get things done in a timely manner. Kudos, shout-out to M H Marvin Ridge High School, congrats, the band beat last weekend that I attended, they, I came in first place in their division of, overall, in, uh, division, uh, two A, that was down in Rock Hill. Sound great, it is, Rapsody is very famous here. Comments, road comments have been, and various communities have been very, very positive, and I think they've, they've done a really nice job overall with that, so make sure that gets back to the A M T and the D O T people, if you will. And now that the weather's breaking finally, maybe we'll see more officers on the corner in the evenings, cause it's like a 50-50 shot. I turn on ways just to see, before I make that turn, to see if there's an officer there.
I get flagged all the time on there.
What's that?
That's why I get flagged all the time on there.
Yeah, and hopefully it's, I don't know what, what it is, cause it's a voluntary thing.
It is, and they have, they have to find the people to take the shifts, and sometimes you're competing with other, other easier jobs, so.
More glamorous.
We, we love seeing the officers there and it does make traffic flow a lot better, so.
Hundred degrees, middle of the road.
Oh, I don't know, you guys okay with that?
What is she, what's that?
I talked to Chaplain and Barbie earlier and they told me to ask you, there's a flyer that we have for the people that are running for Marvin Council, and if someone came by the office here and asked about the election and who's running and whatever, if they could give out that.
I don't know, I don't follow that further, I think we need to check with the, um, election commission, cause I don't know that we can hand out anything.
And we also have industry-like ethics commission, like, me personally and Barbie, that we, we have to stay with it, so probably not.
Fortunately, I don't think there's anything we leave here.
Yeah, okay.
Where I would have done it.
You can send them to the county link.
But it's just on that one form with everybody, and I thought, but then, I thought about it during the meeting, I was like, eh, that's, um.
The only way we can leave something here is if the Board of Elections gives it to us, and we do that, and if we're a polling office, and we're not a polling office.
Okay.
You have any in the motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.